At this time, we'd like to call to order the meeting of the City Council of Palo Alto for February 22, 2016. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Berman.
Here.
Mayor Byrd.
Here.
Councilmember DeBois.
Here.
Councilmember Filseth.
Here.
Councilmember Holman.
Councilmember Niss.
Here.
Vice Mayor Scharf.
Here.
Councilmember Schmidt.
Here.
Councilmember Wobak.
Here.
Eight present.
Thank you. Our first item on the agenda is a closed session, a conference with labor negotiators, the city designated representatives of the city manager and his designees pursuant to merit system rules and regulations, James Keen, Molly Stump, Suzanne Mason, Rumi Portillo, Danya Torres Wong, Allison Huak, and the employee organizations, the Palo Alto Police Officers' Association, Palo Alto Police Managers Association, Palo Alto Fire Chiefs Association, International Association of Firefighters, Local 1319, Service Employees International Union, Local 521, Management Professional and Confidential Employees, Utilities Management and Professional Association of Palo Alto. Do we have a motion to hold a closed session on these items?
Second.
Okay. Motion by Councilmember Berman, seconded by Councilmember Niss, and we have no speakers, so please vote on the board. That passes unanimously with Councilmember Holman absent. We will now go into closed session. Good evening. At this time, we are, the council is returning from a closed session item, and we have no reportable action. Our first, our next item on the agenda is city manager comments. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. A few items to report. First of all, Cal Trains will begin Phase Two of the US 101 San Francisco-Creek Bridge Replacement Project on March 2nd, and the public will start to see changeable message signs on US 101 and adjacent streets about upcoming traffic circulation changes associated with the construction work. And then, starting on April 4th, Cal Trains will implement its signalized one-way traffic control on East Bay Shore Road in Palo Alto and East Palo Alto between Pulgas Avenue and Laura Lane. And during this phase, East Bay Shore will be reduced to one lane in the vicinity of the creek with a temporary traffic signal system allowing one direction of traffic at a time. Bridge demolition and replacement work cannot begin within the creek channel until June 1st and must be completed by October 15th. This one-way traffic will likely remain in place until October 30th. The northbound half of the existing East Bay Shore Road and Creek Bridge will be demolished and reconstructed, reconstructed, and during this phase of work, the center lanes of the US 101 bridge will also be reconstructed. Construction crews will typically work between the hours of 7:00 a.m. to 3:30 p.m. Monday through Friday. Local residents and businesses may experience increased noise levels, and there likely will be significant traffic delays on Highway 101 as well as East Bay Shore Road. Staff is working to ensure that proper signage is installed and that adjacent traffic signals are monitored to reduce the impacts to our residents. This is a state of California project. We do expect that there will be significant impacts to the intersection of Embarcadero Road and East Bay Shore Road and plan to reach out to residents and businesses in the area. So, a bit of good news on the awards front. The AOR Palo Alto 2030 Summit on the Comprehensive Plan held last, I think, May 30th, has won an award from the Association of Environmental Professionals in its Outstanding Public Involvement Education category. The award recognizes programs and organizations that increase the public's awareness of environmental issues and facilitates their role in the planning, analysis, and review process. It also recognizes the level of participation, use of social media, and technology. The Association of Environmental Professionals is a nonprofit association of public and private sector professionals with a common interest in serving the principles related to the California Environmental Quality Act, better known as CEQA. In addition, the city's digital commentator, online tool that allows citizens to make comments and provide feedbacks on elements of the draft comprehensive plan, has been accepted as a case study at the Alliance for Innovations Transforming Local Government Conference in June. So, kudos to Hillary and her staff and other members of our staff team who worked so hard on the summit. For the second year in a row, the City of Palo Alto Utilities Department has been recognized with the Tree Line USA Award by the National Arbor Day Foundation. This award highlights best practices for utility and vegetation management, and Tree Line USA recognizes, in our case, our utility for demonstrating how trees and utilities can coexist for community and citizens' benefits by exceeding the five core standards, criteria that include quality tree care, annual worker training, tree planting and education, a tree-based conservation program, and its Arbor Day celebration. The libraries, Palo Alto Libraries Link Plus Program, which allows library users to borrow items from the public and academic member libraries in California and Nevada, will resume service on Thursday, February 25th. As you recall, the service had been suspended as part of the migration to the Sierra Technology System, and it will include some changes which will allow the Palo Alto City Library to both borrow and lend items as of February 25th, including media in addition to books. Link Plus service pickup will now be offered at the Ring Canada Library instead of the Mitchell Park Library. Link Plus items may be returned to any branch at the service desk. A Link Plus checkout and holds will now be integrated into customers' accounts on the web-based catalog, and the length of Link Plus lending period for media will be 21 days, which is the same as books. So, for more information, folks can visit our library's website. Last Saturday morning, as you may recall, Palo Alto Fire crews responded to a structure fire in a two-story home in the 1100 block of Bryant Avenue. The fire originated in the basement area and traveled in hidden void spaces into the attic. A labor-intensive fire attack by our fire department assisted by mutual aid resources confined the fire to the large home, and fortunately, there were no injuries to the residents or firefighters involved in fighting the blaze. We, it was a regional fire response, and thanks to many of our mutual aid jurisdictions. Just a point of information to share, many of the older homes in Palo Alto, this one included, were constructed without built-in fire stops in the walls and attics, and when a fire starts, it can travel hidden in the walls and pop out at locations distant from the original fire. A great deal of effort is needed to expose the walls, ceilings, and attic spaces to cut off the fire and extinguish it. This type of constriction was eliminated by the fire code in the mid-1950s for the obvious fire safety reasons. And two more things. Our community is cordially invited to the opening reception this Saturday, February 27th, of Alchemy, an inaugural 2016 community exhibition organized by the Coverley Artist Studio Program Artists. This exhibition celebrates artistic exchange and dialogue within and between our neighboring communities and features a broad range of community perspectives and aesthetic expressions. It will be held at Coverley from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. this Saturday, February 27th. And last but not least, just a reminder to our community that all are invited to attend the mayor's State of the City address this Wednesday, February 24th, at 7:00 p.m., and will be held in the El Palo Alto Room, that's the large meeting space, at the Mitchell Park Communities Center. That's 7:00 p.m. this Wednesday, February 24th, for the mayor's State of the City address. And that's all I have to report.
Thank you. So, our next item is oral communications, and we have four speaker cards. Each member of the public is welcome to speak up for up to three minutes, and this would be on items that are not otherwise on the agenda. Our first speaker is Sabell, to be followed by Ed Schmidt. Okay. It said, Ed Schmidt, to be followed by Fred Baylen.
Good evening. I'm Ed Schmidt, a resident of College Terrace. The residents of College Terrace have been good citizens and have responded to a questionable issue about toxic contamination in our neighborhood. You can read about it in the weekly, or you can listen to the next speaker. On a related health and safety subject, we are proud that our council has pledged our city to be a leader in the sustainability movement and reduce greenhouse emissions over the next decade at a faster rate than any other nearby city. Yes, we are in a leadership role there, and we are on an accelerated path. Palo Alto has been the site of unprecedented technology development. Some of those earlier industries involved in the advances did not demonstrate an adequate policy on toxic contamination in their quest for a better future. Developers are attracted to Palo Alto in Silicon Valley. If they select a site that has a history of toxic contamination, then they have to balance profit versus adequate margins of safety from toxic materials for future occupants of the industrial and residential structures they build. Over the decades, biomedical researchers learn more and more about the effects of toxic materials on humans and our surrounding environment, and the risk assessments, and the acceptable exposure levels get lower and lower. The City of Palo Alto has had two recent examples of developers desiring to construct on contaminated soil with an incomplete understanding of the risk level of contamination beneath the soon-to-be demolished structures, the HP building up at 1601 California Avenue and the old Beckman Facebook site at 1050 Page Mill Road. It is time for the council to assert another leadership role and require that, one, developers must research or find a way to measure toxic contamination between old buildings before any demolition or construction is started. Two, the city adopt the most stringent assessment standards that anyone of a number of agency, the EPA, the DTSC, the water boards, et cetera, may have proposed, even if they have not been formally agreed upon. And, three, the city withhold permission to proceed with any construction project until proper remediation operations have been satisfactorily completed. Let us start now to create that label, 10 or 20 years henceforth, for the city with the lowest carbon footprint and the lowest contaminated soil beneath it.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Fred Baylen, to be followed by our final speaker, Amy Crystal.
Thanks, Ed. 1601 Cal Ave hazmat timeline. 2005, Mayfield Development Agreement approval. Soccer fields now, homes later. Upper Cal Ave slated for Stanford junior faculty on three parcels. Phase One hazmat assessments required and submitted to DTSC for the lower two parcels, but not for the largest, 1601. Move ahead eight years to 2013. The lower two parcels are vacant. Soil samples are taken both in and outside their buildings. Phase Two studies are completed. DTSC requires no further action, but highlights a groundwater sample near 1601 that exceeds screening level and indicating it stems from an upgradient off-site source, 1601. 1601 remains occupied, but samples are taken outside the building and show high TCE levels near the adjacent lower parcel. But neither that information nor any 1601 site assessment is provided when the project comes back to the public in 2014 for architecture review and the subdivision map. Upon approval, the three parcel numbers ceased to exist in favor of 68 single-family lots and two condo complexes on integrated development university terraces. Yet, construction is allowed to proceed on the lower part, and it continues today prior to any oversight agency approval, subsequent map revision, or even certainty that homes will be built on the upper half of the acreage it has rested as an open field for months. Finally, word got out about why. Prior to that, no member of the public was informed, no documents were made available, and there was no opportunity for acquired public participation in any voluntary cleanup agreement with DTSC. Particularly, people who might potentially be impacted by the contamination were cut out of the process. Folks pushed back. On January 6th, four members of DTSC came to Palo Alto to meet with the five members of our residents' association subcommittee, Stanford, their consultant, and CTRAs was also present. After that, we were allowed an opportunity to submit a follow-up to DTSC, which we did on the 27th. Two documents, also CC'd to staff, council, and Stanford. What we have to say at this time about Stanford's risk assessment and plan to mitigate is all there. A related article appears in Friday's Weekly. For night, tonight, my message is this. Do not allow this circumstance to happen again. As a first step, keep a close eye on the 1050 Page Mill Road project, and stop any phasing or sequencing of development or tenant occupancy until all demolition, environmental assessment, and any remediation and/or mitigation plans for the entire site are in place and approved by all oversight bodies and appropriate city staff. Thank you.
Thank you. Our final speaker is Amy Crystal.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Tonight's packet includes the first Palo Alto Airport noise complaint report since the city took over the airport 18 months ago. The report demonstrates a low standard for protection of this and other communities. I see several deficiencies that need to be addressed by this council and city management in a broader airport impact report. Most notably, this report offers no promise of improved noise mitigation. It assures that the airport has no control over pilots of general aviation aircraft. It omits any information about the types of aircraft, paths, or altitudes that triggered complaints. The noise report does not count individual complainants within a household. Instead of reporting the small number of medical angel flights using the airport, these flights are reported as air taxi operations and combined with a greater number of non-medical flights. This is not transparency. The report restates noise abatement measures that could be chosen by pilots, but omits any description of the actual noisy routes being used. I frequently track PAO flights well below the minimum safe altitude of 1,000 feet, as far from the airport as Alma Street. These low flights are not considered safety violations by the FAA because they are supposedly necessary for landing or takeoff, but there is no definition of necessary. It is completely up to pilot discretion. A useful report would have included information about the types and noise characteristics of aircraft using PAO. Older aircraft have noise profiles akin to an ATV or a giant lawnmower, so that even if they comply with the recommended 1,500-foot altitude, they create significant noise. A new favorite, the 10-passenger PC-12 turboprop out at PAO, is notoriously loud upon landing approach. Helicopters are the noisiest of aircraft overall, yet we allow training at PAO, hovering. The Baylen's master plan limits the intensity of operations at the airport, but how is this intensity being quantified and defined? Using only numbers of operations at the airport without noting the type of aircraft is an insufficient measure of impact. Council should demand a report that includes analysis of operations at the airport, including those not following suggested noise abatement, and that show paths being used over neighborhoods for takeoff and landing. The burden of these low-over-flights and related pollution is borne by residents of Palo Alto and nearby communities, so homeowners and homebuyers need access to data describing Palo Alto noise and pollution impacts. Thank you.
Thank you. So, that concludes oral communication. Our next item is approval of minutes, and we have minutes in our packet for the date of February 1st and February 8th, 2016. have minutes in our packet for the date of February 1st and February 8th, 2016. Do we have a motion to approve? Motion by Councilmember DeBois, seconded by Vice Mayor Sharpe. Any discussion?
Yes. Could I once again weigh in?
Yes.
I will weigh in again. I think the minutes we currently have are frankly useless, except for seeing who made the motion, what may have been added to it, but there is no substance whatsoever to it. And I know Tom and I both have regretted this before, and I'm regretting it again. I think we should have minutes that are at least substantive.
So for a process to address that...
Yes.
I think we have our annual review of policies and procedures, and it's within that. Is that correct, Beth? Is the minute frequency part of the policy and procedures?
No, it's not.
Okay. So then this would take a colleague's memo to reconsider, or...
I think it does. Correct.
Okay. So that would be the process.
Mr. Mayor, it's in the municipal code. It could be amended by ordinance.
Okay. So that would be the necessary process to address it. All right. All those in favor, please vote on the board. And that passes unanimously. Then we have one item on consent, and so do we have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Second.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Niss, seconded by Councilmember Berman. Any... No discussion, right? Please vote on the board. And... Are you voting, Eric? That passes unanimously. So we can now move on to item number four, our single-action item tonight, which is the comprehensive plan update, a discussion regarding development of a fifth scenario with an improved jobs/housing balance for inclusion in the environmental impact report and the... as well as discussion of the overall project schedule. Director Gittelman.
Thank you. Mayor Burton, council members, Hillary Gittelman, the planning director. I'm joined by Jeremy Dennis. We're thrilled to be here this evening to talk about some real planning issues. We're going to talk about the comprehensive plan update in two ways. One, the council's requested an examination of a potential jobs/housing scenario. We're going to talk about that. And then we're going to talk about the overall process and schedule for the comp plan update at the end. So I have a bunch of charts and graphs, but I'm going to try and keep this moving, and we can always go back if you have questions about specific slides. First, our goals for this evening. We wanted to provide you with some background on existing and possible future relationship of jobs and housing in Palo Alto and the region. We tend to express that ratio of jobs and housing by looking at jobs and employed residents. So we'll talk about that in a minute as well. We want your guidance this evening on a potential goal or objective related to the jobs/housing balance for included in the... inclusion in the comprehensive plan update. Also, the potential policy levers that could be used to accomplish that goal, and the potential inclusion of a fifth scenario in the EIR process. Finally, we'd like to discuss any desired adjustments to the schedule and the process as it's been laid out thus far. Before we get started, just a few notes. The first one says the obvious, I think, but the data you use for some of these calculations is really important, and projections are only projections. You know, we're looking backwards in time here. We're looking at the present, and we've used the best data we can find from the census, from ABAG, from other sources for that examination. And then going forward, we've tried to use the best available projections, but projections are inherently uncertain, and so we know they're going to change. In preparing for this evening's conversation, I looked back at the 2005 projections, and they were all wrong. So these things are only as good as any crystal ball can be. Also, just to note quickly that one of the challenges in looking forward when calculating or projecting future employment is that employment and non-residential development are not proportionally related, and I'll show you a slide on that in a moment. We have... Also, I wanted to note that we haven't done a fine-grained analysis of some of the policy levers and ideas that are included in the scenarios. Obviously, we want the council's input on some of those policy ideas. If they were to be included as programs in the comprehensive plan, we would then have to move to a finer-grained analysis and preparation of zoning ordinances and the like. And then finally, this is an important point. It's been raised by some of the commenters in preparation for this evening's meeting. We haven't, at this point, analyzed a mitigated scenario. So the draft EIR that we discussed at one of our recent meetings uses four scenarios to lay out the potential impacts of the comprehensive plan update. It also includes a whole suite of mitigation strategies, including one in the transportation section that's a variation of a kind of trip cap for new development. We have not yet quantified what the mitigative effects of all of those measures would be, but obviously, we would expect them to result in that any of the scenarios that are selected would have fewer impacts than have been shown in the EIR. So let me just start with some background on the city and the region, put this jobs and housing issue in some context. First, I have a slide that is mostly just for effect. This is really why we're all here talking about this. We all understand and just feel that job growth in the region since the end of the Great Recession has been pretty amazing. You know, this booming economy has led to a pace of job growth that I think none of us have seen in many years, and we just feel it as an important issue that must be addressed. This is the slide that shows, over time, the increase in employment in the city. This is the line that is a gentle slope on the bottom there. The green line is showing that over time, the city has seen significant job growth from 78,000 jobs or so to about 95,000 jobs or so over the period that's shown on this graph. And more importantly, just in the last four years on this slide, we've added over 6% in those four years. So we're experiencing job growth. The other part of this slide is showing in the, you know, kind of ups and downs, those hills and valleys, that's the amount of non-residential square footage that's been entitled in this same timeframe. So this is meant to illustrate that while there is a relationship, of course, between new development and job growth, it's not a proportional relationship. There are a lot of other issues that affect and determine job growth, the health of the economy, the amount of vacant space that's available and being absorbed, the sectors or the type of economic growth that's occurring, and many other factors. And we'll have an opportunity to discuss this in more detail in the future when we get back to that policy issue around policy L8 in the comprehensive plan. So just, let's look at the regional context on the housing side. In the region, we've seen steady growth in housing and population over the time period shown here, 1990 to about 2014. And we've also seen an increase in employed residents commensurate with that housing increase. So on the bottom of this chart, you're seeing Santa Clara County, and on the top of the chart, you're seeing the nine-county Bay Area region. So in both cases, it's an upward trend. Looking at the city now, you see also an upward trend on housing, but we're kind of flat when it comes to employed residents. And this reflects, I think, changing demographics, among other things. There might be something in the data here, but we're seeing smaller household sizes, aging population. So even though we've added some dwelling units in this time period, we tend to... or we think that we're pretty flat in terms of the number of employed residents. If we look at the regional context on the job side and job, the ratio of jobs to employed residents, again, Santa Clara County is along the bottom here, and the nine Bay Area counties, the total Bay region, is at the top. You're seeing there is a good correlation between jobs and employed residents. So in the county, it's a pretty much a one-to-one ratio over time that hasn't changed a lot. And in the Bay Area, same thing. There's a little variation, but there's really not a change, not a lot of change in that ratio. In the city, it's quite a bit different. We see that there's a widening gap in this period that we're looking at between jobs and employed residents, getting to the present day when we have about a three-to-one ratio in 2014. The next slide is going to show that ratio, both in the city and in the Bay Area and the county. So the two lines at the bottom are the county of Santa Clara and the Bay Area as a whole, and you see it's about a one-to-one ratio. And there is the city at the top of the chart at the three-to-one ratio between jobs and employed residents. So here's my cartoon of where we are today. We have about 31,000 employed residents and about 95,000 jobs, or a ratio of about three-to-one, or 3.06. Now, if we do nothing in the year 2030, which is the horizon year of the draft EIR, this is what we project will happen. So this is under scenario one, which we're calling business as usual. Under that scenario, where we don't change anything in the plan, we don't change anything in zoning, our projection is that the ratio will continue to get worse, that we'll get to a 3.2 ratio under that scenario one. And it's important to note one thing about this, that the box on the left there that's showing employed residents, this projection of employed residents is based on our own Palo Alto-developed projection of new housing over this period. We use a lower projection of housing than ABAG uses for the city, and as a result, the number of employed residents we're projecting in 2030 is lower, and that creates... or that contributes to this high ratio. If we had just used ABAG projections, it wouldn't look quite so bad. There's one more slide here that looks at us in the context of the rest of the region. Again, you'll see our ratio is three-to-one and growing. The rest of the county, or the county as a whole and the Bay Area is staying around one. So let's talk about the future and the comprehensive plan update. I think all of us recognized, and we talked about this back in April of last year, that updating the comprehensive plan, this is really one of the reasons that we're doing this, why it's a council priority. It's an opportunity to look at and manage the pace of growth in a meaningful way, look at these trade-offs between jobs and housing, and take some affirmative policy actions to try and address this business-as-usual future that will happen to us if we do nothing. So the plan is still being developed, as you know, but the draft EIR advances the conversation by posing a number of scenarios, three additional scenarios in addition to business-as-usual. Scenario two and three include policies and programs that would slow job growth projected by ABAG, and scenarios three and four include policies and programs that would address or somewhat increase the housing that's developed. So it's a range, although all of them, scenarios two to four, would basically perpetuate the ratio of today in terms of the jobs/housing balance. So we'd stay around 3.0, 3.4, 3.6, something like that. As shown in the staff report, if you look at a hybrid between the scenario with the lowest job growth and the scenario with the highest housing development, you start to move the needle a little. So instead of being 3.3, 3.04, it would be more like a ratio of 2.88. So one of the questions we have for the council this evening is if you had to select a goal for the comprehensive plan, what would it be? Would it be something like just doing better than we're doing now? Would it be something like 2.88, or would it be even better than that? And equally as important, once you identify that goal that you would like to aspire to, what are the policy levers or programs that you'd like to include in the comprehensive plan update to address that goal? So this chart, and this repeated from the staff report that you received, shows some of the potential policy levels, levers that were included in scenarios two, three, and four in the draft EIR. The policies fall into two categories. One category are policies to slow the rate of job growth, and the other category are policies to encourage new housing. Because as the staff report explains, if you're going to affect the jobs/housing balance in a meaningful way, you have to do one of these two things or both of them. I'm just going to take a minute to tell you, to walk down this list. I think it's pretty self-explanatory, but on the policies or the program levers that would potentially affect the rate of job growth, we assumed an annual limit on new office R&amp;D development in two of the scenarios, scenarios two and three. We assume there would be some modest reduction in commercial FAR in one of the zoning districts in town, the CC2, which is near Cal Ave. We assume that we could make some possible adjustments to remove commercial FAR and swap it out for residential FAR, just, you know, not a lot, but some modest adjustments in downtown. And we also assume that we would put in place some kind of regulation. We suggested maybe a use permit that would allow us to the first, for the first time, regulate new office R&amp;D employment densities going forward. And I know we're going to have some further questions about that. Happy to go into that in more detail in a minute. On the housing side, all of these scenarios assume we'll be implementing diligently our adopted housing element. Some of them also include creation and adoption of policies to encourage more smaller units, so get to the type of housing we want to create, micro-units or small units. Some of the scenarios, actually, two of them would eliminate some of the housing sites in South Palo Alto. This was a program that the council wanted in the plan, and we're going to talk about this further on one of your March dates. We have a discussion focused on this issue, March 20-somethingth. So the scenarios look at exchanging those housing sites. In one case, you eliminate some sites and you increase the density on some other existing sites. In another instance, you would eliminate those sites and add potential new sites along El Camino Real, including the frontage of the Research Park and the shopping center. So it's a... we're testing both of those ideas. If you eliminate sites in the south, how would you make up for that loss of units? Would it be increasing densities, or would it be finding new sites? And then a couple of the scenarios also suggest that you could potentially moderate or increase the height limit for, as a way to incentivize new housing, just up to 55 or 60 feet. So those are the ideas that are some, many of the ideas that are in these scenarios, and we're obviously interested in whether the council has additional policies or programs that should be included to address this goal, this ratio between jobs and housing, and if there are things that you would like to add to that list. And it'd be great if you have some things that we could potentially add to the side of the list that slows job growth, or on the alternate side, that might increase housing production, because both will have an impact on the bottom line when it comes to the jobs/housing balance. So just a few words on schedule. You know, we've been at this comp plan update for a long, long time. The current schedule is for us to complete the process and bring you a comp plan for adoption in May of 2017. So that's the schedule you received in your packet. That schedule was distributed to you at the council retreat on January 30th, and that's when you made the request to discuss it in more detail this evening. So I included a couple slides that are just a repeat of that schedule. The hard copy's in your packet, and I think it's much easier to read in that form. Essentially, you read down this table. The column on the left is showing the topics of CAC meetings. The column on the right is showing the topics of city council meetings, and the dates are in the middle. There've already been some changes to this schedule. The asterisk is indicating that April 11th date for the public hearing on the draft EIR has been moved to April 25th as a result, and because the CAC is doing some more work on transportation, that conversation is going to be moved out as well. So we're happy to get the council's thoughts on this schedule, the interaction between the CAC and the council, and the schedule of meetings. I also wanted to pass on to you the CAC's desire to participate in the discussion of housing sites and programs. We had initially had a joint meeting between the CAC and the council. Actually, I think it was scheduled for this evening, and then we had to reschedule it for this conversation. The CAC is still very interested in being part of these discussions. I think I've talked to some of the CAC members. They're interested in also talking about what a more effective structure could be for a joint meeting, so it's not just, you know, each one of them gets up and stays, says a few words, and then the dialogue is just among the council members. So we'd love your thoughts about that, and also wanted to pass on, we've been working with our consultants at Placeworks, and they've indicated that we can analyze some additional scenarios, one or more additional scenarios within the schedule that we've outlined here, but it would mean we would have to move pretty expeditiously. And, you know, by the middle or end of May, we'd have to identify what those scenarios were in some detail to permit the analysis to proceed. the analysis to proceed. Obviously, there would be some budgetary impacts of that. So that concludes the presentation. These are really the discussion questions that we hope will be useful to you after you hear from the public. Question number one, should the comp plan include a goal or objective about reducing the city's ratio of jobs to employed residents? And if so, what should that be? Number two, what additional policies or programs should be considered to address this goal, if you'd like that goal? And should these be analyzed as a fifth scenario in the EIR? And then what adjustments, if any, are required to the schedule and process? Thank you very much.
We can proceed and have a brief round of technical questions of staff before hearing from members of the public, provided that council members can adhere to those guidelines. So I'm going to, if we're going to do it, I'm going to exercise chair control if we drift away from technical questions, which are not rhetorical in nature. Councilmember Wolbach.
I appreciate the warning. On this chart, the key characteristics and impacts, attachment B, on, I have a couple of questions here. On page one, under transportation impacts, for instance, city total motor vehicle trips, it says 2014 existing conditions, 432,122. I wasn't sure what, for what units? Is this per day, per week? What does this represent?
I'll have to look that up, but I will.
Okay, and while you're looking that up, my second question also, so on page two on the back of the same chart, greenhouse gas GHG impacts, does this, do these numbers account for commuters coming into Palo Alto for their jobs and then leaving at the end of the day, and the greenhouse gas impacts of their travel?
Yes. The way greenhouse gas emissions are calculated for vehicle trips, we basically get credit, or we get penalized for 100% of the emissions from trips that are internal to Palo Alto. And then for external, internal, or internal, external trips, we get credit or penalized for 50% of those trips. So we get, we calculate the whole trip length and emissions, and then 50% of that is basically charged against us in our emissions inventory.
Okay, and one, if you're still checking on the first one? Okay, third question, and I think it's my final question for now. In the policies to encourage housing identified and studied thus far in the draft EIR, there's been some discussion about it in various venues, but has the Stanford Research Park and the opportunity for potential housing there, or also at the Frye's site, was that included in, or were both of those included in the possible encouraging housing options?
Yes, in fact, all of the scenarios include housing at the Frye's site, because that site is included in our housing element currently. And scenarios three and four assume that we would have somewhat higher permitted densities on that site. I think it's currently zoned RM35, and suggests that we could get additional units by, if we remove the housing sites in the south, we could add some units there.
That's what I thought, thanks for that.
On the Stanford Research Park, just scenario four assumes that we would, and test this idea of potentially adding housing sites in the Research Park along El Camino.
That's right, thank you for reminding me, but it was just along El Camino Real, correct?
Right, I mean, we weren't specific to sites, but somewhere in that area of the park, not way up in the, in the outlying area. And then Jeremy tells me the answer to your first question was it's daily trips.
That's daily, okay, thanks.
Councilmember Niss.
So, should be relatively short, but one of the things that you mentioned is adjusting the height limit, which has been, you know, almost part of the Ten Commandments for the city. So talk about, as you said, a slight adjustment, 55 to 60 feet. We have done that, I can think of with several buildings in the city, including the JCC. But what would it actually take to do that? As I recall, it is not an ordinance, am I correct? It is a policy? Help me out. It went in sometime in the 70s, I think.
I'm assuming that it would be an ordinance change, we would have to adopt, it would be a policy and ordinance.
Is it actually an ordinance? Help us out.
Yes, there's certainly a comp plan policy regarding it. Also, some of the development districts themselves do have a 50-foot height limit as well.
Do we have an overall city ordinance on height limit?
There isn't an overall city, it's designated in certain districts as a development standard.
Okay, so, but it's not overall. So if we really wanted to change it in some way, we would have to consider how to do that with, however you indicate we should do it, correct? And it probably would not be without a great deal of discussion. That has been in place, as I recall, maybe 40 years, does that sound right? Anyone know? Could somebody find out? That would, that would be really helpful, because I, my recollection, long before I was on the council, but that the building that went up at Palo Alto Square, which is 12, 13, 14 stories, whatever it was, actually prompted the final 50-foot height limit. And except for very rare occasions, we have not, we have not addressed nor dealt with that, and yet people have brought it up time and time again. So it would be very helpful if we actually know what it would take to, to move that needle, which is not very much, but certainly has been significant in the past. Thanks.
Councilmember Schmidt.
Four scenarios give a range of outcomes. A year ago, the council had three meetings, I think 10 hours altogether, devoted to a development cap. That was between December and March, and agreed, I think unanimously, to set an annual cap at 50,000. Now, each of the four scenarios, and including the fifth scenario, are between three and five times the annual space limit. Why isn't there one of the scenarios that reflect the council discussions of a year ago?
Oh, thank you, Councilmember Schmidt. Actually, both scenario two and three reflect that concept of adding, of a cap, an annual cap. What you're seeing when you look at the square footage number is the already entitled square footage at the Medical Center, and 15 years' worth of, you know, from 2014 through 2030, of potential growth with a limit of some kind. So we have specifically crafted, at least those two scenarios would be, would have an annual limit of some kind in place, and would conform to the policy L8 in the comprehensive plan.
Yes, I think I have three questions. One is, actually a request, it's a question and a request. The LOS thresholds of significance that were used, is it our current city thresholds? And the reason I'm asking is because, can the appendices also be put online? Because I don't have a port for a CD in my computer.
Thank you, Councilmember Holman. I think the appendices are online, and if they're not, of course, we can remedy that. One of the appendices does outline the significant thresholds that have been used, and I apologize if you haven't been able to get to that somehow, but I'll check on that and make sure it's up there, online.
I looked a few times, it still isn't up there from my discovery, anyway. So are we using our current?
The appendix explains what thresholds are used. We've tried to use the current thresholds, the ones that were adopted by the council back in, I don't remember quite how long ago. There have been some that we had to adjust based on changes in guidelines by the, at the regional agencies and other changes in law and practice, and some that were just adjustments based on the fact that this is a plan and not a project, so it's a little different than a project. But I encourage you to review that appendix, I'll make sure you get access to it, and if you have specific questions about why this threshold and why not that one, happy to answer those.
So the bigger question is, we could change, this would be a good time, if we were going to, this would be an appropriate time, I would think, to change what we use to review performance at intersections.
Well, we have included in the EIR analysis, as I'm sure you've seen, a number of metrics related to level of service, vehicle miles traveled, vehicle miles per capita, and a whole bunch more. The council could certainly give us direction to use alternate metric, and we could assess what the impacts of that would be on our contracts and schedule.
Okay, thank you. In the presentation referenced earlier and otherwise, I'm not clear how an EIR would analyze aspirational goals.
Thank you for that question. I'm really asking what the council would like to include in the comp plan itself. So what I'm hoping is if the council has some goal, you know, some idea of what you think we should do in terms of turning around this trend we see in the jobs-housing balance, this would be a great time for us to know that, so that we can include it in the land use and community design element, and in the work that we're going to do with the CAC on policies and programs in the land use element. It would also help us define what this fifth scenario could be, because what the goal is informs what these policy levers would have to be. You know, what are the additional thoughts that you would have to, or policies or programs you would have to pursue to either slow the rate of job growth or increase the amount of housing produced? We need, if you've set a goal, we'd need to know what those are, and that's really what we would be analyzing in a fifth scenario.
So listening to that, I hear that that's, you know, how it might work, but it doesn't translate for me on how we would use that information in doing the technical analysis in an EIR. So it's, because of the EIR.
Well, yeah, let me try and, try and explain what we do. If you set a goal in the comp plan and you give us some idea of the policy levers, the policies and programs that you would want to put in place to achieve that goal, we would develop an assessment or a projection of what we think the jobs and housing resulting from those policy choices would be, and that would be the basis of the analysis.
Okay, all right. And then the other thing is, we've talked about from the beginning how we might use this aspect of scenario two, then another aspect of scenario three, or whatever, and I've never really understood how you can mix and match, because things are so intricately associated, especially land use and transportation. So I'm not sure how we mix and match.
Well, Councilmember Holman, I mean, this is, you know, this is a suggestion that we made, that we could use these scenarios as a way to advance the policy discussions that the council and the community are having about transportation investments and about land use changes, and that if the council wants to mix and match, they can do that. And then we would do, basically what we're talking about doing for scenario five, we would analyze that new combination of things as your preferred scenario, preferred alternative after the public comment period on these four scenarios. And our consultant is saying that we can do this and circulate it for public comment within the schedule that we've outlined, if we're efficient, and we define this scenario quickly in May.
Okay, so it really would be sort of like, we're not really mixing and matching, we're just saying, we want to do this from scenario two, we want to do this from scenario three, and now go analyze that. So it's not really a mix and match in terms of impacts, it's a mix and match in terms of goals, now that we have some idea of what the impacts might be?
The characteristics of these scenarios. And if I could just clarify, apparently, the appendices to the EIR are online at the website, paloaltocompplan.org. The link to the appendices is within the table of contents.
I went to the, I went to the cities, the city agenda, and looked at the staff report, and that's where I looked, so I didn't, they weren't there, so that's where I looked. Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Schmidt, you had a quick follow-up?
Yes, I did try and find appendix H, which is a traffic report, and it was not on the city website. I could go through G, but I couldn't find H.
Okay, I'll check again. Apparently, someone has found it.
Okay, Vice Mayor Scharf.
Thanks. The first question is, do we take into account the growth of electric vehicles in all of this, when we look at greenhouse gas reduction, and we project it out based on what we're doing?
Good question.
Because we have the highest percentage, I believe.
Yeah, we have not taken credit for all of the, you know, kind of Palo Alto-specific measures that we think will be in the SCAP, because we've included that as mitigation. And as I said at the beginning, we haven't really run a mitigated scenario. So we have taken credit for what changes in the fleet and the emission factors that the state, the Air Resources Board, has put in the standard methodology, but that's all.
Trying to keep it to technical questions, so what you're saying is we are not taking into account, put aside the SCAP, the fact that we are purchasing at a certain rate, which is increasing, electric vehicles in Palo Alto? And so that's not included in any of the scenarios?
We have simply included at this point the statewide, what CARB is saying, the state is achieving, that we haven't included anything above that.
Which we noted to be wrong, right. Okay, when we look at the housing scenario, when we increase more housing, do we make any assumptions as to how many residents of those new housing units actually live in Palo Alto? Because otherwise, it has no effect on commuting, in fact, it creates more traffic. I mean, if people live here, they walk to work, right? Or they bike to work, or they, you know, maybe make.
Work here.
Right, if they work here.
So you live here.
Oh, so, so how many, right, no, how many usually housing units work here, if I say live here? The one, do you look at me like I'm an idiot? You need to say, that's a stupid question.
We were working to figure it out.
100%. He took a while to say that.
No, so we looked at that.
Well, this is interesting. What we did for 2030 is we had a projection of the number of dwelling units, and we translated that into the population based on average household size. And then we used the factor that A-BAG uses to get from population to employed residents. Only about half of our population are actually working in Palo Alto, there are others, are retired, working, retired students and the like, so it's.
So when we say employed residents, those are employed residents in the city? Is that it?
That's right.
They're not, they're not just generally employed, they're employed in the city?
No, 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 they're just employed. They could be employed anywhere.
So they could be employed anywhere, that's what I thought.
That's right, and we don't, we don't know how many are employed in Palo Alto versus in Menlo Park.
So what we're saying is this EIR does not take into account how many employees are employed in Palo Alto, and how many are employed in, say, San Jose or San Francisco?
Well, that's not entirely accurate either, because the, the analysis of traffic, for example, uses a travel forecast model that has in it origins and destinations all over the Bay Area, and based on our projections of where people are living and working, the model projects what the impacts will be. So in the population and housing section of the EIR, you won't see broken out how many of those employed residents work in Palo Alto, but in the traffic impact section, and therefore in the air and noise, that is factored into the modeling that's been done.
So if we increase one housing unit, or 100, if we increase 100 housing units, does traffic go up, or does traffic go down?
Traffic goes up when you add housing units and when you add non-residential square footage.
So the other thing, I wanted to focus a little bit on the transportation impacts, and what I primarily wanted was the mode shares. So I was struck that they're all actually very similar, and it seems like very little changes under any of the scenarios. For instance, you know, in the existing conditions, 7.9% of the people walk, at best we get up to 8.6, scenario four, which is a bit of a. At best, we get up to 8.6, scenario four, which is a bit of an outlier. Otherwise, it's 8.1 and 8.2. So what's driving that 8.6? What are we doing to have all these people walk?
You know, that level of detailed question, I should have our traffic engineers come and respond to that. I think what people are seeing in these numbers is a lot of similarity between the scenarios, and so we're getting...
Except scenario four.
Scenario four has an emphasis on sustainability measures and free transit passes and other things that start to change the results. I'd have to get the traffic engineers here to give you more information on what's really a, what's a factor or an assumption in the model that really makes a difference. But the free transit passes, I know is one of them, and that's what's in scenario four.
Okay. I would find that really helpful because I don't really understand from a technical point of view how we drive down the impacts with these different scenarios, which relates to the quality of life, which relates to, when you ask me what scenario I would like to see in a scenario, I'd like to see a scenario that solves impacts, and I'm not sure how to understand that without that information.
I really appreciate that question, and I understand where you're coming from. The idea of piling all the mitigations onto these scenarios and running that is really attractive because we do have some very aggressive transportation mitigations. And we'll ask our modelers to tell us, you know, kind of how that translates when we do that.
And then finally, so we used our, our housing numbers, right? I mean, that rate of growth, our, not our, we used our historical rate of growth, right? And did you average between nine, between 2000 and 2010, we had a certain number of housing units produced. And then from 2010, basically, to 2000 and now, the last cycle, there's this cycle of ABAG and the previous cycle of ABAG, they were completely different in the numbers we actually produced. How did you look at that? Did you average it, or what did you do?
Well, the rena allocations we got in those housing elements, in those cycles, were very, very different. But what we did to come up with the average in housing production is, it's like a 40-year average.
So we took the 40-year average...
Yeah, we went back a long time and calculated how many units per year over that long timeframe, and it worked out to be 145, 149, something like that.
So that's, that's the answer for that. And then for the job numbers, just so I understand this, what we did is we took the ABAG job numbers that they estimate for this rena cycle. Is that the ones we used? Do we use a 40-year average? Or what do we use for the ABAG numbers?
The job numbers are from ABAG's projections 2013. So we took their job number for scenario one and scenario four. Scenario two and three include policies to slow the rate of job growth, so we started to show lower.
Okay, but just so I understand, we took the ABAG numbers in 2013, so ABAG put forward a number that they think will be there in 2030, right?
I'm sorry, it's, it's the projections that were included in a document called Projections 2013. They did it in 2013.
Right, but they're for 2030.
They're, they're going for 2030, yes.
Right, that's what I thought. And so there was a certain number of jobs that ABAG projected.
Yes.
And then, and we use those numbers for scenarios one and what?
Four.
One and four. And then for two and three, we took the ABAG number, and then we applied mitigations to the ABAG number to drive those numbers down. Is that how we did it?
That's right. The, the policy levers that I showed about slowing the rate of job growth, those were applied to the ABAG numbers, and they started to moderate that growth that's been projected by ABAG.
Do we have any indication that the ABAG numbers are even in the ballpark? Because clearly their housing numbers are not in the ballpark.
Yeah, I've always thought the ABAG numbers are high, but in this economy we're seeing right now, they're actually low. So, you know, the question, over, over the next 15 years to 2030, I don't know. You know, we, we have to use what we, what we have. ABAG projections 2013 is what we have, and we don't have anything, any local projection that we could use in lieu of that, like we do on the housing side.
Could we create our own? Could we hire a consultant and figure out good numbers?
I think, you know, our idea is that the business registry ultimately will yield the data to help us moderate census data and get a local projection that works, but I don't, I think it would be difficult to do that now. Because we don't have the same track record on job data that we do on the housing side.
All right, thank you.
Councilmember Philseth.
Thank you. So first of all, this is really cool. Thank you very much. I have two questions about the hand, the attachment here. The first one is down this, this number, 11,448, what's the right number?
I'm sorry?
This number, let's see, scenario four, city and SOI total vehicle miles traveled says 11,448. That's obviously not right. What's the right number?
Yeah, we, we issued a correction on that, and I, if we're looking at city total vehicle miles traveled, scenario four is 57, 5788497. It was obviously a typo.
5788497, yeah, I understand. So the second question is, you know, I go, when I was going through this, I looked all the numbers from appendix H, actually, right, and the staff report. And I don't see the city total motor vehicle trips. The numbers here are a lot different from the ones I saw, and this must include more. Where do I find those numbers in the staff report?
I will have to look that up and get back to you.
Okay.
So it's, your, your question is, how do these numbers of total vehicle trips relate to what's in the book?
Yeah, in the book, you've got, you know, statistics for drive-alone vehicles and vehicle trips and so forth, and they don't match these numbers. So, I mean, I think there's probably more in here than there are, but I just, where do I find these numbers? If you can find those, that'd be great. Because they're a lot different. Thank you.
So, so I just want to clarify that part of what we're being asked is whether we want to test scenarios that are outside the bounds that are found in this book.
Right.
And if we suggest a policy that lowers the impact, is that considered outside the bounds? Would it require a new EIR if it's better and not worse?
I'm not sure I understand your question. Could you...
So if we, if we suggest a policy that maybe had slower job growth, does that have a negative environmental impact that would require a new EIR versus something that required more use of a resource?
Well, I think any change, for, for better or for worse, that constitutes a new kind of package of things, a new scenario, we would want to analyze and disclose to the public what the changes were, whether their benefits or impacts.
So whether it's better or worse, if we go outside the bounds of the book, we're looking at a new analysis?
I, I think we would want to analyze that package of things, yes.
And I guess on the, there was a lot of benefit, I guess, assigned to TDM adoption, and it looked like a fairly fixed assumption of success per, per part of the city. So would, one of the things we could consider tonight may be testing what happens if TDM doesn't work quite so well. So we were assuming we got 40% reduction in downtown. Like, what happens if we don't see that?
You know, you could certainly ask us to analyze something like that. I think our mitigation regime sets what we think is an achievable goal for different districts in that mitigation measure, trans 1A, we say, you know, in these various districts of the city, you would achieve what we think is an aggressive but achievable goal.
So it's not really a conservative, I mean, is it, you said aggressive but achievable. It's not necessarily a most likely, or, I mean, how would you call it?
Well, you know, we asked our, our traffic consultants what would be an aggressive but achievable goal in downtown, in the research park, you know, out on El Camino somewhere. And they, you know, came up with what they thought a percentage reduction would be, and the mitigation measure assumes that would be put in place as an enforceable performance standard on new development. And then on top of that, the development would have to offset any additional trips beyond that reduction through a variety of means.
Okay. I had a question, and I think it's similar to what Greg Scharf was asking, and it has, and I think, I think part of the confusion has to come with this idea of the mix and match. And so when you look at, you know, like scenario four, we have all these sustainability things, but then the numbers overall kind of come out the same. So I was looking at like chapter five, which was the SEQA impacts. And so we're, we're saying we're going to mix and match, but then the scenarios are evaluated kind of as-is. And so the question is, like, you know, how's, how, how are we supposed to interpret that? And how is the public supposed to interpret that? It kind of gets lost that we're saying, you know, well, if we took all these sustainability items in four and applied them to another scenario, that scenario would be better, right?
That's a point we make in the alternatives chapter of the EIR. If you've gotten to that section, and we talk about the fact that you could take these sustainability measures in four and combine them with some of the slow growth measures in two and three and end up with a hybrid, and what that would do in terms of increasing or decreasing the impacts. So that's an idea that we articulate in there. And I think our, our thought was all along that if the, if the council wants to go in a direction that is, you know, different than these scenarios, you tell us what scenario you'd, you'd like, and we will analyze that, and, and we'll be able to show you and, and the public what the, what the results will be.
So, so I think I heard you in answer to another question say that we might have another public comment period. I mean, are we committed to that? It seems like we would almost have to do that.
Yeah, I, I think if you're going to identify another scenario that's outside these bounds of scenarios one through four, our assumption is we would do an analysis parallel to the one we've done already for these scenarios, and we would circulate that for public review before we proceed to the final EIR.
Okay, but we're still expecting people to, to comment within 90 days on these four?
Yeah, we, we would like comments on this draft EIR within 90 days. At the end of the 90-day period, we would have to quickly, as a group, land on what we think the additional or preferred scenario is. And then we would analyze that and circulate that document for another comment period before we proceed to the final.
Okay. Real quick, a couple of other areas. So greenhouse gas impacts, didn't, didn't appear that we included the impact of construction under greenhouse gas, but construction is considered in other impact areas. Is that right?
I will have to look at that and get back to you.
Okay. And then the, the significant area of interest, I guess, basically Stanford, are we basically, do we get assumptions on their growth over that time period? Are we basically assuming it was fixed?
We did not assume additional growth in the sphere beyond what's allowed in the GUP. So we already have an issue that, with Stanford proposing housing beyond what's in the, in the GUP. So we'll have to look at that. When we reevaluate whatever scenario the council comes up with, we'll include that additional change in the analysis.
So we know about that proposal. Do we have any discussion with them about their forecast to 2030?
No, we've been relying on what the county has approved for them to this point.
Okay. And I didn't see any analysis of high-speed rail impact. Does it just assume that either Caltrain or high-speed rail would maximize use of the tracks?
You know what, I'll have to ask the traffic consultants. I think in the traffic analysis of those intersections on Alma, they may have considered an increase in frequency, not designating who would, you know, which service would be using the, the, the tracks. But I'll have to check that and get back to you.
Okay. But yeah, even in like noise and everything, I just wonder if we should consider high-speed rail as an impact. And then on housing, you know, we basically said all scenarios, no impact on schools. I was curious, when we look at building smaller units, which, do we try to model the effect of, say, seniors moving into smaller units and freeing up larger houses? So if people want to downsize, you know, and we have this idea of building smaller units, is, is that part of the model?
The school calculations are not a complicated model. I mean, we're looking at the number of multifamily units created and what the likely population in those units would be. But I can get you more detail if...
They're not assuming that people, like, we free up R1 housing because people move from there into small units.
Yeah, it's not that sophisticated.
And two, two last questions here. Do we know how other cities regulate employment density?
Really good question. You know, we haven't done an exhaustive survey. I know from my personal experience that normally it's done, as we suggested in the policy lever chart, through the requirement for a use permit where you can attach conditions. And through those conditions, you can designate, you know, a number of employees. It creates, you know, just from a practical perspective, a very difficult enforcement challenge. But that, at least in my experience, is, is how that issue's been addressed.
Okay. And then was there any consideration to policies that would impact kind of buying versus renting?
I'm sorry?
So this is a little, I'm jumping around a little bit, but back to housing. When we talk about smaller units, was there any consideration, or are there any differences in terms of an EIR between units that could be purchased and units that could be bought?
There's really not a difference from the EIR perspective, so we didn't get into that issue.
Okay, great, thank you.
Counselmember Berman.
So just one quick follow-up question to, to Councilmember DeBois's question about the greenhouse, the effects on greenhouse gases of new construction, is, you know, when we do look into that, I hope we'll also look into the benefits of the new green building standards and, and the, you know, delta down from old buildings that are very poor, you know, with, with greenhouse gases versus new building that's much more efficient.
I have a few questions. First, the, when we look at our jobs housing ratio, which is a big deal throughout this document, I see from slide number six that we're referencing the source as the longitudinal employment household dynamics slash US Census. And I asked our economic development manager today what data we've received from our business registry, and he said that we have so far about a 93% response rate and higher rate yet from larger businesses. So the smaller ones have been the slowest to respond. And we're, I think he said, a little over 80,000 jobs, which is, I think, the first time that we've had an actual census within our city. Have we correlated our business registry data within and integrated it in this document?
A good question. I had a conversation with Mr. Farrenbach today on this issue. I think it's, it's, it's actually a really interesting question. So we're relying on census data, which is not always that intuitive and easy to get because jobs are a hard, hard data set to find and to use. The business registry asked a question of businesses about the maximum number of people on-site at any one time. So the way the question was phrased for our businesses, they were asking, you know, if you have a business, what's the maximum number of people you're going to have there at any one time? That's a little different than how many employees do you have? And so I think the questions are different between the census and the business registry, and we could, of course, change that. But there is a difference there. There's another difference in that there are some exemptions that apply to the business registry, the home-based businesses. I forget what all the other exemptions are. But, so there's going to be some variation in that data, and, and more than that, you know, we didn't go into a more detailed analysis. But we understand there are differences, and there are some reasons for those differences.
I'll wait till comments on that. On slide number 18, we have a set of possible policies to slow job growth. There's none there that address a topic that has been raised by the council numerous times over the last year, but we haven't taken any, given a policy direction, in part because we've been waiting for guidance from the city attorney's office on what is permissible in terms of being able to restrict jobs within existing buildings, not, this is all about new structures. So can the city attorney give us any guidance on what levers are possible to turn in that regard, if we so chose?
Sure, I will take a stab at it. As a threshold matter, it's, it's, of course, much easier to regulate new development. And there are lots of mechanisms for regulating new development, and this council has already put in place levers for that. As for existing development... As for existing development, it's certainly more difficult to do that. If you use your zoning authority, you know, property owners have a vested right to continue businesses that they have received entitlements for. And so it would be difficult to then regulate, you know, employment density and start to decrease employment density of existing businesses. There, and as a result, cities really don't do that frequently with existing businesses.
Can I ask a follow-up on that? So when you say under, they have entitlements under existing zoning. So say under existing zoning, we anticipate four office workers per thousand. Are you saying that they have an entitlement that has no correlation to what we zone for in that regard, but it's still an entitlement under zoning density?
So we would have to analyze each specific matter. And certainly, there are some businesses that have received entitlements that anticipate a certain level of employment density, and they're increasing that level of anticipated density. In those situations, I think that it would be easier to regulate in terms of decreasing.
Well, I think that's what we're, that's the nut. We're concerned with where we're seeing in certain circumstances significantly more densification than zoning anticipated. That's the thing I'm trying to ask about.
Okay, yes. And in that area, as to those categories of businesses, there could be some, you know, code enforcement action that you can take. For instance, if they, you know, received a conditional use permit that regulated density, it said you can only have 100 employees on-site, and they have 150, then you could take code enforcement action.
So barring a conditional use permit, if we have just zoning, and take it hypothetically that we anticipated four employees per thousand in an office, and I'll put a very extreme in it, and they, some business put in 20 per thousand, parked for it, maybe they're, whatever's the limit under the fire code and the use permit there. But say hypothetically, if they put in that many, are you saying that we couldn't regulate that? We couldn't regulate and restrict them putting 20 employees per thousand square feet legally?
Again, it really is fact determinative. And it depends on what the actual development standards are in the existing zoning ordinance. It depends on the specific permit requirements.
Yeah, but these are development standards of anticipating four per thousand, right? Isn't that a development standard? That's our general office. That's the main thing we're talking about here.
Right, right. So, and that is, that's based on parking requirements. Four per thousand is generally relates to parking requirements, not necessarily employees. So if they have, you know, 10 part-time employees, there are lots of different facts that make this type of regulation difficult. That being said, I think that, you know, there are certainly ways that you can explore that. And it's, you know, it certainly has not been done by many other cities.
Well, I can tell you, and when I had business in St. Carlos, we were regulated on a multiplier times parking spots on-site, and that was their routine method. So when we come to discussion, I'm concerned that one of the major considerations that we may want to do in an alternative scenario, we still don't have adequate guidance on whether we can turn certain levers or we can't. And that's a big concern to me. So I'll leave it at that for the moment. Under the bike mode share, I see it, I've heard previously that our bike commute was nine or 10%, and this says 2.8 on total trips. And I think about our safe routes to school, where we're 50%. And have we looked at school trips in this calculation as well?
I think this is total trips, you know, percentage of total trips out of the model, but I will get more detail for the council on that.
Okay. And then Vice Mayor Scharf asked about, for instance, the rate of EV adoption or otherwise. And I understand that things that we may end up adopting with our sustainability and climate action plan, when we do that, may create different scenarios. But I just want to make sure, are we permitted to use Palo Alto-specific impacts in the calculation versus, say, a state one? So if we have data that shows that our adoption of EVs is the highest in the country and gaining, are we permitted to use that in this analysis?
Absolutely. It would be a question for the technical experts how to factor that in, given the methodology and the emission factors that we've been given from CARB. But we can certainly do that. I'm expecting to receive that comment on the draft EIR, and we can, we can do that work in the final.
Okay, thank you. All right, that concludes our questions, and we now have 16 comment cards. If anyone else wishes to speak, they need to bring their cards forward now. We will be cutting it off. So I see more cards coming. Well, that's where I'm going to determine. Need to know how many cards. So we have a total of 20 speakers. If, colleagues, if we, if we have three minutes per speaker, that's going to be an hour for public comment. That'll take us to a quarter to 10. Are we game to start our discussion at that time because it's liable to?
It's usually late.
Yeah, I think we're going to have to limit it to two minutes per speaker. So if people can prepare on that basis. So our first speaker is Ben Lerner, to be followed by Jessica Clark. Welcome. No, no, and no penalty either.
No? So thank you for letting me speak. The draft EIR of the comp plan describes four scenarios for future growth in Palo Alto and analyzes them as to their impacts on traffic congestion, air quality, and other factors that affect our quality of life. Unfortunately, a study of these scenarios has shown them to have an adverse impact in Palo Alto's neighborhoods, despite the mitigations they propose. We need a new scenario, and thank you for being open to that tonight, one that puts Palo Alto's neighborhoods first and prioritizes improving Palo Alto as a community for families and seniors with a high quality of life, excellent schools and parks, and so on. To that end, our new scenario should promote the following: minimal job growth, no housing growth beyond the ABAG mandated housing element, and the housing we should add, we add, should be built for working families and low-income people, not for high-income executives and tech yuppies for which we have a lot of housing already. And we should eliminate the need for commuters to park in residential neighborhoods. Let's develop a new scenario that improves the lives of our residents. And as a final thought, I heard earlier tonight that you're open to engaging the consultants again. And if you'll be engaging them, I'd like to suggest that you ask them to produce a scenario, to design a scenario that has no net adverse impacts. It'd be very useful to you guys on council and to us residents to know what that would be. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, I should add that we try to discourage both clapping and cheering as well as booing because both things, especially the booing, can intimidate folks, but even the clapping and cheering can intimidate speakers. We want everybody to feel comfortable in expressing their opinions. So our first, our next speaker is Jessica Clark, to be followed by Elizabeth Snyder. Welcome.
I had three minutes typed out, so it's going to get cut off short. So here I go. My name, my name is Jessica Clark, and I'm one of three generations living in Palo Alto, and I'm raising the fourth. I'm a licensed daycare provider, and my husband is a hospital respiratory therapist. My family is part of the Palo Alto fabric. I'm here tonight because the lack of housing options in Palo Alto has forced my family into crisis. Last month, our rent was raised 20%, nearly $1,000 increase for our three-bedroom rental, making it impossible for our family of five to remain here long-term. Over the years, we have been lucky to have housing here, yet our housing instability has steadily increased. And although we have a short-term compromise with our landlord, realistically, there's nowhere left for us to go when the clock runs out. Many people respond to my situation and say, why don't you and your family just move? My response to them is, why would we? You see, my, you see Palo Alto is my family's home. Both my husband and I were born and raised here. I attended Nixon, he went to Palaverde. We attended JLS together. He went to Paly, I went to Gunn. Our children now attend Palaverde and JLS. This is where both our parents still live. My three siblings and their families live here. My cousins and their families live here. And most dear to my heart, my 100-year-old grandmother lives here. We stay because we value our family, friends, and community. We all support and take care of one another, and that's something that is priceless to us. Although we make a strong income for almost any other place in the country, we have been on the BMR list for almost five years and have barely moved up. If my family struggles to afford to put food on the table and buy clothes for our children, what about the families that are less fortunate than us? For my, for families like mine and others, it's just near impossible to exist here. Palo Alto is pushing out an important group of people who created this vibrant community and continue to it to this day: the teachers, hospital workers, childcare providers, law enforcement, firefighters. The city is sending us a message that says it does not value what we do for the community. Sorry. I'll finish the next, next time.
Thank you. Elizabeth Snyder, to be followed by Cheryl Lillenstein.
Hi, thank you. Thank you. I'm Beth. I'm operating under the assumption that we're all talking about the ratio of a concept of people like all of us living directly in Palo Alto and working directly in Palo Alto, and how adjusting that ratio impacts really everything. I'm happy we're talking about this, so thank you. I love Palo Alto, and I couldn't think of another group of people, a better group of people or leaders who could care and actually do care about this concept that I think we're talking about. I'm only here to offer a principle that goes through my hand, my head every day as a parent, just like Jessica. It's very simple, it's not my own, I think we probably all feel it or know it intuitively. And the principle is as follows: when we take care of that, our earth in general and our environment here in Palo Alto, and we take care of those who take care of us, for example, children's teachers, mental health counselors, our family's medical workers, fire, police, employees, administrative roles, service roles, childcare roles, and many more, when we fundamentally take care of that and those that take care of us, we're taking care of us. So that very principle addresses the question we have here. It would appear that, number one, discussion question, should the comp plan include a goal about reducing the city's ratio? It would make sense to me, and I'm sure there's people much smarter than me who can look at this, that a ratio closer to one-to-one would give the greatest choice to all of the folks who want to live here and want to work here. It would appear to me that that would address really all the concerns, the environment and basic, you know, other folks who had mentioned, do you want to have a good quality standard of living? Again, people smarter than me, people with the data, I'm happy to help in a volunteer capacity. I'd like to hear and see my children's teachers be able to live here too. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Cheryl Lillenstein, to be followed by, is it Amy Ashton?
Good evening. I'm here as the President of Palo Altons for Sensible Zoning. And what we see is that the DEIR shows that none of the four scenarios results in a Palo Alto that improves lives for residents. All four scenarios result in unavoidable and significantly more traffic and pollution. So I'm grateful that you are entertaining another scenario. And what we would like to see in this fifth scenario is a focus on a scenario that improves traffic and pollution problems as a precondition for providing slow housing growth for specific categories of people. Those people are the people who, under present conditions, will never be able to buy here, typically defined as middle-class: the clerical workers, city staff, middle-management tradespeople, low-income workers, service workers, and small-business owners. And I just want to align, a heartfelt alignment with the two of you who spoke before me. We would like to also include seniors living here who don't own their houses or who still have mortgages yet want to retire, and the homeless. It's important that we deal with the greenhouse gas emissions because none of the scenarios that are presented offer a mitigation that actually improves our lives. We are looking at a declining system. So it looks as if the three-to-one jobs-to-housing ratio is really kind of a proxy, that we're not actually talking about what are the, what are the environmental effects of having three times more people coming into our city every day? And those effects are, we will have ever more pollution and ever more traffic. And that's the problem I believe we really need to solve. Thank you.
Thank you. Amy Ashton, to be followed by Nisar Shaikh. Nisar Shaikh, to be followed by John Kelly. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to share my thoughts. In 1978, when I came here from Chicago, I was told proudly that we have only two tall buildings. I think one on Palo Alto Square and one on University Avenue. And now the congestion, both foot traffic and car traffic is as much as, then it used to be only on the Stanford Events Day. So, but now we are talking about more growth. And two scenarios came to my mind. One, it could be like Beverly Hills, where tourists will be driving around showing the houses of rich and famous. Or as in Randy Comissar's book, it talks about Portela Valley, where in the morning, rich, I mean expensive cars go out and beat-up workers' cars come in. So Palo Alto could be a different city, different streets in the daytime and a different in the nighttime. So in short, also when I walk around, I see a lot of help-wanted signs. There is so many. And I can imagine any of those jobs, people could live and work here. So, and still we don't want to grow, so some, you have to come up with something very creative or magical to have affordable housing or whatever. Thanks.
Thank you. John Kelly, to be followed by Molly Cornfield. Welcome.
Mayor Burrit, Vice Mayor Scharf, councilmembers. I forget when it was, but last fall, I came to a meeting here where we were talking about ADUs, and I kind of feel like a little bit Groundhog Day because I think we're back dealing fundamentally with the same issues. And if you listen, if you remember the people who spoke that night, and if you heard Jessica Clark and others who I think will speak tonight, they've told you very, very clearly, there is a problem with housing in Palo Alto. And I think that if you do not put a scenario in the planning process which clearly addresses the need for more housing in this community, you're making a mistake and you're doing a disservice of the community. So I would say that on this discussion question, one, should the comp plan include a goal or objective reducing the city's ratio of jobs to employed residents? That's fundamentally the wrong question. You need to have a goal that says clearly, we need to increase housing, we particularly need to increase housing that is more affordable and that creates diversity. And I personally think that ADUs are a great way to do that. Now, if I understand the numbers correctly, you have a demographic challenge and you have a policy opportunity. The demographic challenge is that there are a lot of people my age who want to stay in their houses, and at some point over the next 15 years, I will probably enter the class of people who are not actively employed. I'd like to defer that as long as possible. But that's going to happen, and I'm probably going to stay in Palo Alto if I can. But at the same time, if you build small housing, ADUs are a perfect way to do it, you're going to provide housing for people who can't afford larger houses. you're going to provide housing for people who can't afford larger houses, and you're going to provide housing for people who are actively employed, who are perhaps my son's age. And the last thing I'd say to you tonight is that in addition to diversity, I would strongly, strongly, strongly urge you to embrace the principle of continuity. I think that's essentially what Jessica Clark's talking about. There are people on my street who are suffering huge rent increases, and they're having to move out even though they've lived here for generations. So I think you should take Scenario Four, all the sustainability provisions of that, and add to it something that will aggressively add housing for Palo Alto. Thank you.
Thank you. Molly Cornfield to be followed by Steve Levy. Welcome.
Hi. I'm really glad that you all are discussing this issue, so thank you so much. I recently moved back here with my husband, and I'm 25, so we really didn't have the option to look for a place in Palo Alto. Right now, we're living with my parents, which, as you can imagine, is not very fun. And I know there are a lot of people like me who are young and want to live in Palo Alto and even work here, and personally, I don't like to drive for a few reasons. I'm not very good at it. So, for all of your sake, I try to stay off the road, and if I'm living, or if, when I work in Palo Alto, there's really no option for me to live within walking or biking distance, which I think is something that is really worth considering. So, thank you.
Thank you. Steve Levy to be followed by Geraldine Moran. Welcome.
I second really everything that John Kelly said about housing, but I want to talk to you about traffic. I don't think any of you or any of the people in the audience hate jobs, and we can have this discussion again after the finance report. What I think troubles people are the impacts of traffic and parking from the commuter imbalance. So I would like you to craft Alternative Five that goes not just at the new development, but I think where Councilmember Scharf was going, at really reducing the single occupancy and the car travel of the existing development. So I would take the transportation policies in Scenario Four and add to them. I saw free transit passes for residents. How about subsidized transit passes for low-wage workers or any workers? I saw grade separation in BRT. How about running with Caltrain more service to California Avenue and shuttles to the Stanford Research Park? I saw paid parking downtown, but how about really pricing the permits to provide incentives for people to move? I saw two garages in Alternative Four. Thank you for the IBRC. How about more garages if that solves the problem? I think jobs-housing balance is a misnomer. I think we have a commuting and traffic and parking imbalance which will be mostly solved, I suspect, by going after the behavior of the existing workers. So that's what I would do in Alternative Five: go full-out to get those existing workers to change their behavior.
Thank you. Geraldine Moran to be followed by Bob Moss.
Good evening. Thanks for listening to us tonight. I'm really grateful that this council's considering a fifth option. I've looked at the first four, and they're just not adequately addressing what I feel is the top issue, if you look at it from any angle. I'm most concerned about the critical need to decrease our greenhouse gas emissions as a city. In this case, the forced long car commutes by so many workers in this city, which translates to the lack of local dense housing. You have, right now, the golden opportunity to do this through the promotion of local zoning adjustments, specific incentives for builders, and funding the Palo Alto Transportation Management Association. So focusing on, in my opinion, focusing on inhibiting job growth just accommodates longer-term economic stagnation and isolation as a community. So it's a chance for us all to think big here while we can, and making it possible for workers to actually live right here where they work: smaller, denser units built vertically on top of retail businesses, or granny units on already-developed lots, et cetera, this kind of thing, while pushing the benefits of mode shifts and getting around: bikes, walking, scooters, et cetera. We have a mild climate that we're enjoying. There's no excuse. So please, put climate change mitigation at the top of your planning list. Thank you.
Thank you. Bob Moss to be followed by Judy Kleinberg.
Thank you, Mayor Buritt and councilmembers. It was interesting, the staff report said that they didn't think any of the four options that they proposed were actually going to be adopted, but neither the fifth one. I think they're right. Let me give you a little perspective. We are not going to solve the jobs-housing imbalance unless we have a better traffic problem. Traffic is bad. We ought to seriously consider re-establishing the bus system run by the city that we had in the 1970s, because VTA does a terrible job, and that will help. Data I have is about 20 years old, but at that time, more than a quarter of the people who lived in Palo Alto also worked in Palo Alto. I'm sure that percentage has gone down because we have a higher ratio of seniors, so we have more people commuting in. We aren't going to be able to solve that because we're going to keep on moving more people in Palo Alto at the older ages where they aren't working in Palo Alto. So how do we address this? Well, I think one of the ways, the simplest way to do it is to reduce the number of job growing, and if we can come up with a good system for preventing significant increases in job growth, that will solve most of the problems. Now, one of the things that people talk about is building smaller units, but if you're going to build smaller units, you probably put more of them into the same space, and that's not going to help. Furthermore, small units by themselves do not reduce the number of people who live here. Have any of you ever been to the Tenement Museum in the Lower East Side, New York? That building was about, apartments were about 200 square feet, and they had some data on people who lived there in the 1870s. A family of four plus a border in less than 200 square feet. So when prices for housing go up, the density goes up also. Are you aware of the fact that a few years ago, we had an apartment in Ventura with over 20 people living in two bedrooms? We have a housing problem because of the cost, and we can't solve that here.
Former Mayor Judy Kleinberg to be followed by Dan Garber. Welcome.
Thank you. Judy Kleinberg speaking for the Chamber of Commerce. The jobs-housing imbalance is of special concern to the business sector. So many of our employees can't find housing here and must travel long distances to work, and businesses struggle to find the employees needed to fill the jobs to support mostly our retail and hospitality businesses. You've seen the signs. You walk around downtown, and there are signs on every window looking for people. Because this is a critical challenge to businesses here, we encourage you to increase allowable housing densities and the number of housing units allowed near public transit. Transit-oriented development has been a part of our city's comp plan for decades, but little has been built. And you can't just zone for development without analyzing whether any developer would build what you've zoned for. It has to make economic sense. If the city wants developers to build housing, it should encourage mixed use, such as retail and housing, or even office and housing, or a combination of all three. It's not just affordable housing, by the way. It's not just housing for low-income workers who obviously need it, but it's also housing affordable for a variety of people, as John Kelly and others have said. It's also housing for seniors who are stuck in their homes because they can't downsize because the housing they would move into is too expensive. So they stay in their homes, lowering the supply, raising the prices. Allowing increased height limits to accommodate more units in carefully-selected places is another idea, which I think perhaps you ought to be looking at. And I'm going to use my last moment to dispel a misstatement which is constantly said, and I want to de-mystify this statement. It is a constant misstatement that it is the office workers that are creating the parking problems downtown. The data that the city has, the data that has been already presented, that is credible data, shows it is not the office workers that are creating that problem. Most of the office workers don't drive cars, or they don't drive cars alone. They take public transit, walk or bike. It is the workers who can't afford the permits. It is the workers who are part-time or shift workers, or the workers working in hospitality, or working two hours here and there, and they're working three jobs. It is those kinds of workers that we ought to be looking at to subsidize, to help, to keep them out of their cars or find a place for them. So as you're looking at affordable housing, be looking at affordable parking solutions as well. The business community is here to work with you collaboratively. Please remember that. We're here to work together. Thanks.
Thank you. Dan Garber to be followed by Justine Burtt. Welcome.
I'm Dan Garber. I'm the co-chair of the CAC Committee, and these comments are both mine and my co-chair are their colleagues'. Most of these comments were made at the retreat, and I will remind you of them. They're all to do really with the schedule of the committee. I had asked if it was the council's intent to have the CAC follow or precede the council's discussion about L8. Perhaps any conversation this evening may actually make that question moot. And, as well as the updates to the schedule that were presented, I have not actually taken a look to see if they've changed since the retreat. There is at least one council member that was interested in better coordinating discussions between the City Council and the CAC to try and find ways to have potentially outside speakers come in to allow us to focus debate and discussion in the CAC, which I continue to think is a very good idea. Finally, not finally, but a reminder that we did take a straw poll, and there is interest in the CAC to have a joint meeting regarding housing. And finally, a new topic, and that is because of the limited amount of time that we've had, the Sustainability Subcommittee is out of sync with the Subcommittee of the Transportation Committee, and at some point, they need to be synced up, but we don't have a way of doing that within the existing schedule. And if there's opportunities or ways that the council would like that to be addressed, that would be of great interest to us as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Justine Burtt to be followed by Stephanie Munoz. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Buritt and City Councilmembers. I'm here to ask you to prioritize housing for moderate-income families, to allow more densification within one mile of the train stations and along El Camino, and you can do this within a 50-foot height limit. And I suggest you look to Paris for an example of how this has been well-done and why it should be done. They have two-to-five-story multifamily housing buildings. The metro trains and buses run every few minutes, and perhaps you all should take a research trip there. It might be a tax write-off, and then you can be reminded of what we should be aspiring to here in Palo Alto. It's a very healthy lifestyle. Whenever I'm there, I don't rent a car. I just take the metro and buses around. I eat baguettes and cheese and lemon tarts every day for 10 straight days, and I still lose weight. It's a great lifestyle, and I encourage you to look beyond the resistance there is in Palo Alto to densification to a model for how it could be done. Help people get out of their cars by changing zoning so people who work here can afford to live here as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Stephanie Munoz to be followed by David Cole.
Good evening, City Council. I don't think anybody is opposing the idea that we need more housing in proportion to the jobs. And thank you for looking at that, this problem belatedly, but looking at it. And you have your work cut out for you. This week, and these past two months, some odd things have happened. There was a woman in San Francisco who was denied an operation to help her limit her future family, and she was required not to have this operation, a tubal ligation, which she had already paid for three times. She paid for it by her taxes. She paid for it by her insurance that she paid, and she paid for it in her copayment. And while our government was trying to make more population, our representatives, who are perfectly reasonable representatives, they're centrists to the core, were saying that we need to improve immigration because we don't have enough college-trained, STEM-trained people. We have to bring them in from foreign countries. Well, and at the same time, one of the presidential candidates is saying, "Well, we have to have universal health care and universal college education." And another candidate, very well-qualified, says, "Oh, no. We can't have universal health end..." Why? It wouldn't work. We can't have free college... Not going to work. Try a little harder.
Thank you.
Thanks.
David Cole to be followed by Doria Suma.
Mayor and City Council, thank you very much for considering a fifth option. I think it's very pertinent that the first four options were so close together, and even the sustainability one didn't even change the numbers very much. So in addressing your questions up here, should their comp plan look for a smaller ratio? Absolutely, without question. And that they did look at that as a guiding thing in the first place is interesting. If we're really going to meet the numbers and integrate the S-CAP with the comprehensive plan, I think the answer to the second one would be a policy of achieving 80 percent greenhouse gas reduction by 2030. That would integrate these two plans, and I think it would also speak to what mostly other speakers have tonight, is greater housing in more areas and less jobs to meet this. So with that one goal, I think you will integrate a lot of the statements here into achieving a plan that is truly sustainable and more livable for Palo Altons. Thank you.
Thank you. Doria Suma to be followed by Lydia Koo. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council staff. And I wanted to mention that I am on the CAC, but of course, I'm not speaking for the CAC tonight. And I want to appreciate the co-chair's statements. The scheduling of this is really hard, I think, for staff and everyone else, because there's kind of conflicting issue. We want to be pragmatic enough to get things done efficiently, but we also want to have the right result in the end. So I'm really happy that you're going to be considering another scenario, and I hope it will address the problems already mentioned here very eloquently about housing. I think the housing that we do create should be mostly for those who need subsidized housing, especially for those who are already a part of our community that we want to retain as neighbors. And I think that can be done, I think that needs to be done within the present height limitations and site development and municipal codes, so that we don't, for everyone, lose all the benefits of our already-built-out community and what a great place it is to live. And I would emphasize in that, that we should remember that every time we talk about getting rid of the 50-foot height limit, we are also talking about reducing view corridors for everyone and light. So in addition, I think that we should not build more office unless the office can be, unless the parking and transportation impacts can be totally mitigated. In other words, it's not the people being here that creates a problem. It's the traffic and parking issues that turn our neighborhoods, our streets into parking lots and make the traffic unbearable for everybody. So I think that so many people have spoken, that I think that's the main thing that I hope the Scenario Five will result in. Thanks.
Thank you. Lydia Koo to be followed by Jeff LeVine. Lydia Koo, to be followed by Jeff Lovinsky. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. We all know Palo Alto has a really bad housing imbalance, as everybody has said. What you have before you are four scenarios. These scenarios will allow the imbalance to become even worse. We are asked to choose if it comes at a slower, moderate, or faster rate. I think the scenarios are based upon assumptions that experience indicate will not hold up. Take the project proposed for the Olive Garden restaurant site. This project will have 13 condominiums, and office space for what the city calculates will be 36 employees, almost three times the number of housing units. By this calculation, but this calculation is based on 250 square feet per employee, which will have been reasonable if we were still in the late 20th century. Well, we have long seen densities that are two to three times that. So this is going to have six to eight times more jobs than housing units. Does this make sense? You will hear or have heard, well, you have heard, that we should continue growth in the hope that we will eventually be able to partially remedy the additional problems you are asked to enable. Long experience have shown that such aspirations are rarely fulfilled. The consultants' report reflects dogma that's detached from the reality that we residents have experienced day in and day out for years. Even now, with this dogma, the consultants couldn't even paint a rosy picture. You hear some people say that Palo Alto was irresponsible to have job concentrations without corresponding housing, but this is done because planners said that jobs around transit centers were needed to make transit viable. Now, they say that there are too many commuters, that we need to have much more housing around these transit centers, and expect us Palo Altons to sacrifice our quality of life for these major employers and developers. Fancyful suppositions of how impacts can be mitigated have created a real credibility problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeff Lovinsky, to be followed by Arthur Keller. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Burt and Council members. The DEIR clearly shows what many have said, namely that our city is looking at a very bleak future. In our endless pursuit of more, more, and more, we've become growthaholics in denial of how we are destroying ourselves, our city, our neighboring communities, and our environment. We're so addicted to growth, we can't see how it is robbing us of what made Palo Alto great. There's much talk tonight about the job-housing imbalance, but that imbalance isn't really the cause or the solution to traffic. As I think you heard, we could have more housing, you can have more jobs, and you'll still get more traffic. So it's really a distraction from the more important issues. Our city needs bold solutions, ones that significantly reduce our traffic congestion and our parking shortages. Timid steps won't help. The beauty contest for office space, though intended to encourage novel approaches, hasn't generated a single project that will actually reduce traffic. From where, then, will change come? It needs to come from you. Please take this moment to articulate new, far-reaching, creative strategies that will deliver true relief. There is no better time, because your actions tonight will flow through the comprehensive plan discussions and become the laws that govern us for many years beyond. Consider requiring that all commercial development actually reduce traffic, parking, and greenhouse gases. Mandate independent verification to guarantee compliance. Establish ongoing reduction goals for staff, commissioners, and the press to monitor. Ratchet up requirements automatically if targets aren't met. With steps like these, you'll finally have a fifth scenario worth studying, because it will be worth achieving. Thank you.
Thank you. Arthur Keller, to be followed by Nielsen Buchanan. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council members. So firstly, people talk about a jobs-housing ratio. It's really a jobs-housing-transportation triangle. And we need to think about, in terms of the people who work here, the historical figures show that about a third of the people who live in Palo Alto, who are employed, work in Palo Alto, and just over half of the people who live in Palo Alto and work, work in Palo Alto or surroundings, adjacent city, including Stanford. So therefore, there will be people who we add to Palo Alto in these new housing, that also live, that work elsewhere, and we need to make sure that the transportation solves their problems, as well as bringing workers in here more efficiently. So therefore, we need to think in terms of systems dynamics. Systems dynamics indicates we have feedback loops that says that as we address impacts, we allow growth to increase. And when we don't have impacts dealt with, and the impacts get worse, then we slow down growth. And so we need to have some automatic mechanisms, because after all, the comp plan is going to be here for the next 14 or 15 years, and probably, based on the history, more than that. And we need to basically think about how we set this up. There are school impacts we need to consider, increasing enrollment. After all, all the scenarios overfill our middle schools, and the issue is that there are five different ways this impact, the school enrollment impacts our school budget and our population. Also, there was a question that was raised about the annual office cap and whether it was included in the scenarios. But what wasn't, didn't come out from that, is what level of annual office growth cap was included in the scenarios? Was it 50,000 square feet? Was it 100,000 square feet? What level of growth is an important question. So while smaller housing units do tend to have a lower impact on schools, as was mentioned, there are certainly consequent impacts there. So we need to think carefully about what kind of housing we create, whether it's for low income, whether it's for expensive pricing, and we need to think about the impacts of those on schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Nielsen Buchanan, to be followed by our final speaker, Peter Stone. Welcome.
I would like to start by thanking Dave Garber and Arthur Keller and the committee that's been putting all this together. Last week, I saw, it's my first chance to tune in on what's been accomplished with the work so far, and Hillary, your staff has done a very good job of wrestling a very, very slippery peg. I think it's maybe time for even more divergent thinking on the scenarios. There's a real danger of converging too quickly on all the opportunities that the future holds for Palo Alto. A fifth scenario is not bad. Even Steve Levy suggested about a sixth scenario. That divergent thinking may help everybody revert to the mean. Six scenarios is way too many. I think the process would then say, here are the three or four, two or three ways that you really want to go, when you shake this process all the way to its core. When you do get down to the two or three things that people in Palo Alto are going to resonate, I ask you to take another step and to have fewer words and more pictures. This is really tough stuff to read through. I think about the meeting facilitators I've worked with over the years that would be drawing pictures of what people are talking about. Throw in some of those, that iconology would really help the public understand where we're going. Let me just close very quickly with my personal family situation. When I moved to California, made some quick decisions about where to live. I knew how much money I was going to make and where I wanted to live. I let money dictate where I was going to live. And now that I'm older and live in Palo Alto, where I did not start, I'm amazed how many adults I know in Palo Alto that started elsewhere. Not many people started off in Palo Alto. They started in Sunnyvale, to Los Altos, to Mountain View, East Palo Alto, and finally got to where we want to live. In the case of four adult children in my family, only one lives in Palo Alto, and frankly, only one will ever live in Palo Alto. It's an income-driven thing, and it's also a lifestyle. Three of the children, adults between 25 and 45, made personal decisions that they will never be able to live in the near vicinity, much less Palo Alto. That's a brutal reality. And I appreciate people coming here, thinking, gosh, I want to live in Palo Alto, whatever income level or whatever family circumstance has dictated. But my four children in my family did not choose the right parents, and they are not going to get enough money ever to live here, and they've made rational decisions to live in the foothills, to live in South San Francisco, to live in another state. Those are lessons I ask you all to think about, because Palo Alto and the City Council cannot accommodate everybody that does want to live here, even our adult children, who we love the most. Bye.
Thank you. And our final speaker is Peter Stone.
Mayor Burt, Council. Peter Stone, speaking on behalf of the Chamber of Commerce. I can make this a little briefer by just incorporating by reference everything that John Kelly and Steve Levy said, because I think they're both spot-on. I'm concerned that the focus on the ratio may be a little bit misplaced, kind of perhaps a poor proxy for what the real concerns are. The one that keeps getting the most articulation is housing, and I think there's, it's almost a consensus, which is amazing, that we need more housing for the people that live here now and are being forced out, the people that work here and want to live here and can't. And I also think, unfortunately, the reality that Nielsen just articulated is something that we all understand, is a reality. We try to mitigate it, we should try to mitigate it. The other big prong of concern really isn't about how many jobs there are in the Palo Alto area, it's about the congestion and the pollution, which is, of course, driven a lot by commuters, but it leads you to a focus, if that's your perspective, it leads you to a focus on trip reduction and bringing transportation into the second half of the 21st century as we conclude the upcoming comp plan period. So I would just urge us to focus our attentions in those two directions and not fixate on the ratio, per se. I'm afraid we'll get into some counterproductive measures, citywide zoning measures, for example, to address reducing job growth, which may be kind of, you know, a cure worse than a disease when it comes to really addressing housing and congestion. Thank you.
Thank you. So we will now return to the council, and we should be recognizing that there are two different items that the staff has asked us to weigh in on tonight. The first is the potential fifth scenario on the EIR, and the second is the schedule and topics of the Citizen Advisory Committee and City Council meetings. And I'd suggest that we break those up, that we're now at 9:25, and to reserve a half-an-hour to discuss the schedule. It may not take us a half-an-hour, but try to budget the next hour or so for the scenario discussion, and then leave a bit of time at the end to separately discuss the scheduling. All right. I see the first council member is Councilmember Schmidt.
Is this comments and motions?
Yes.
Yeah, I want to thank everybody for coming and talking. It's an extremely important night, because in a way, it defines the debate that we're engaging in and where it goes forward. I think the data given is very important. The one that jumps out at me is Slide 11. It says, you know, we now have a three-to-one ratio of jobs to employed residents, one of the highest in the country, and dramatically higher than our neighbors in Santa Clara County or even in San Francisco. But it hasn't always been that way. Actually, the number from 1990 to 2010 jumped quite dramatically. And I think the consequences are clear. Traffic, parking, density, cost of housing. I guess we've heard tonight, but it's very clear from the citizen survey that these are issues that are becoming more and more prominent and tricky. So how do we grapple with them in dealing with them? Does changing the ratio of jobs to housing make a difference? I guess one of the things the data shows pretty clearly is Palo Alto's ratio of employed residents to households has been constant for a while and remains very similar to Santa Clara County and our neighbors. So we are not in a unique position of having a declining number of workers per household. Yet I think it is clear that the commute is a problem, the three-to-one ratio. We are in a narrow strip of land. People can only come from the north and the south. It leads to congestion on both 280 and 101, the data shows are dramatically congested. The congestion in town is increasing. Again, the data from the DEIR show congested streets in town. As a matter of fact, in the work we have done on 2555 Park and the recent Page Mill traffic studies shows that there's a number of other intersections around town that are not covered by the DEIR that are or will be operating at F shortly. Seems to me that the clear message from the data is that we need to have a scenario with lower job creation. Now, there was a mention that it's hard to go beneath what we have, because the Stanford Health Project has already been approved, but I think it's easy to set that aside. That has its own traffic impact analysis and program. But for the rest of the city, it would be important and effective, I think, to put a cap or ceiling on. And I think that should be in proportion to what the council has been working on over the last year. We've taken three important commercial areas and capped them at 50,000 on an annual basis. And I think legally, there's no problem with monitoring growth on an annual basis. So it is certainly something we can do in our comp plan. So I would propose that we put a cap on square footage in Palo Alto at 100,000 square feet per year. Now, from that, I assume the health center is already included, since we're talking about approving new projects in town. That is twice the annual cap that we have already established for three major commercial areas, and so it would cover the other commercial areas around town. So I guess I would propose that as a starting point for the fifth scenario.
I don't hear a second at this time. Okay. Are you done?
Yes.
Okay. Councilmember Wolbach.
So I'm not sure I'm ready to make a motion yet, but a couple of comments. The year 1990 is the benchmark we use in the state of California for our target for greenhouse gases, correct? And when that was proposed as a target for greenhouse gas levels for the future, many people saw that as lofty or unrealistic. Is that fair to say? I would venture that the 1990 jobs-housing balance in Palo Alto is also lofty, and many will see it as unrealistic. But I think that if we're going to have a fifth scenario that explores beyond the range of the four presented, which is why we asked to have a discussion about a fifth scenario, I would venture that the 1990 levels were, or would be a good place to look. So you can see that on Slide 11, as Councilmember Schmidt pointed out of the presentation. 2.47 to 1, jobs to employed residents is still a pretty strong ratio. That's still a lot of jobs for every employed resident, but it's less severe than what we have today. It's about 15% of a reduction in the ratio. It's not radically outside the range of what might be achievable if we address both sides of the imbalance, if we address both sides in an aggressive way, in a very thoughtful way. To speak to a number of the comments that were made, do it in a way which addresses, you know, the impacts of the housing growth, which will inevitably be a part of this. So what we would be talking about would be a lot less office over the next, over the term of this comprehensive plan, a lot less job growth than what we've seen over the last plan, a lot less job growth than what we've seen over the last couple of decades. And so you'd inevitably have less of the negative impacts from that. But we'd also have to be really careful about how we add housing in a way that doesn't produce the negative impacts. There was a question earlier, I believe Councilmember Scharf asked about the traffic impacts of housing, and there's an assumption that I think is worth further exploration about how adding housing necessarily would contribute to traffic and parking. I don't accept those assumptions. I think that we are starting to talk at the PTC about second units, accessory dwelling units, and, you know, the question of whether people who live in a neighborhood with an RPP program would maybe not be eligible for as many street permits for parking if they had an ADU. That's part of the discussion. There's been, the idea floated, and I think we'll be discussing this more, the idea of transit-oriented development of housing or housing with ground floor retail without the density limits. So you could build as many units in that space as you want within our height limit and size limits, but without any cars allowed on the site. And, you know, I think that we're going to be exploring what are our legal capacities to restrict the cars associated with that kind of a housing to give people who live or who say they want to live a car-free lifestyle, as one of the speakers tonight said, you know, give them a chance to prove it. Developers say that's what the market's demanding. A lot of millennials say that's what they want. A lot of seniors say that's what they want. There appears to be a demand. I think it's time that we start exploring that in a pilot in the city, regardless of our comprehensive plan. But I think that our comprehensive plan should focus on these, I mentioned these just as examples, for how housing could potentially, if we're thoughtful, if we're creative, if we're listening to the concerns of residential neighborhoods, how we can add housing without all the assumed negative impacts that staff currently assumes. And I don't mean to beat up on staff. I think you've put a tremendous amount of work in here. I really do appreciate, as Councilmember Phil said, this is pretty cool stuff. There is a housing crisis destroying our community and Silicon Valley. It is less severe when you look at, you know, the nine counties of the Bay Area as a whole, but the closer you get to Palo Alto and San Francisco, the worse it gets. We really are one of the epicenters of this problem, and it does result from decades of adding jobs and being, you know, addicted to job growth but not having the housing growth to go with it. So the question is now, do we want to, you know, do we want to turn around? Do we want to reverse course on the trend of the last few decades? Do we want to fulfill our legal, but also our regional and our moral responsibility to allow housing to be built? We don't have to give housing to everybody. This is a common, you know, straw man argument used against housing advocates, that we want to, you know, everybody, you know, that people who say they want housing, millennials ask for housing and that, you know, they're asking that they just be given it. But what we do have a responsibility to do is stand out of the way. We can be smart about where it goes, how it goes, what kind of restrictions, especially around traffic and parking are associated with housing, but we have a moral obligation and to a degree a legal obligation to not block housing. And I think that our, the evidence that we've seen about how much of, even within our A-BAG obligations, how many housing units we have not built, even within our A-BAG allocations, speaks to the complexity and the difficulty of adding housing in Palo Alto. This also matches with the academic research, which increasingly shows that complex planning processes and restrictive zoning lead to more difficulty in adding housing. There was something mentioned by the audience that tech yuppies have lots of housing, and with all due respect, that is not accurate. A lot of so-called tech yuppies are middle class and they're being gentrified out of Palo Alto like other middle-class workers, like teachers, like firefighters, et cetera. You know, they're either moving into housing which would normally, otherwise would have been, you know, lower-income housing and pushing out those people, or they are themselves, like other middle-class people, moving to other communities nearby and causing gentrification there and tearing those communities apart while also not being able to remain in this community if they're a native. So I think that if we are going to propose, if we are going to explore a fifth scenario, I think that, as Nielsen Buchanan was suggesting, you know, it should be, you know, it should be really different. We should really, you know, open this up. I'm not sure exactly how to phrase this into a motion, but, you know, so I'll leave this, you know, that to my colleagues. But I think we should, you know, have a range of options before us that, you know, that doesn't close the door at this point. We're still in brainstorming phase, which means we need to have options available.
Vice Mayor Scharf.
Thank you. So I listened to a number of the speakers and I thought it was interesting that I thought that Doria Sumner and Steve Levy were saying similar things, and I'll get back to that. I think what we need is a scenario about quality of life. And I'm a little hesitant for us to put, like Vice Mayor Schmidt suggested, caps on things. I think we need to be very clear about what we're trying to achieve and tell staff, these are the goals we want, as opposed to these are how we achieve the goals. Staff's in a better position to come up with in many ways, solutions than we are as we sit here at the dais. So I think we should focus a lot on what do we want to achieve with this? And one of the things I'm concerned about, first of all, is the focus on the jobs-housing imbalance. I actually think it's a straw man, just as I think Doria Sumner said, we're not against jobs, we're not against people moving here. What we're against is the impacts of those jobs. We're opposed to the traffic, the congestion, and the negative impacts that these things bring. So, and I think the same is true of housing, the way I asked the question. The more housing we build, the more people you have, the more traffic you have, the more congestion you have, the more impacts on the schools you have. On the other hand, housing provides a lot of benefits, and I think we should build more housing. But I think we need to be clear about what we're trying to achieve. And I actually appreciate a lot of the comments that Councilmember Walbach said, in that as we look at this for staff to go forward, I'd like to see a mitigated alternative that says, okay, we're going to add housing, but we're going to add housing in the downtown area where there's a part RPP in place and we're not going to give any permits to those people. So without any permits, they can't have any cars, or we don't expect them to have more than, because where are they going to park those cars? Or are we going to actually then create problems by doing that because they will park way out further? You know, so we need to think about what are those, and I'm hesitant to tell staff what that would be, but I think we need a quality-of-life scenario. And I think we have to ask ourselves, why do we care about the jobs-housing imbalance? And I mean, the arguments people have made is we have a regional responsibility, we have an obligation to provide more housing, to do our regional part. There's some notion that you get people out of their cars by building housing next to jobs, but yet we have no data on that. And I think there's arguments that rental housing may do that, close to job centers, but instead we create scenarios that don't show any of that. So I actually think we need to think about what we really want to achieve here. I noticed in these scenarios, people aren't really walking much more, they aren't biking more, they aren't using transit more, none of that. And I think a lot of that is we're not using Palo Alto-specific data. Our model therefore is flawed. I was disappointed that we weren't using the EV data frankly, because we have the highest concentration of EVs, I believe, in a city or close to it. So I'd like to see us do that. I think the other thing we should also look at a little bit, if you're concerned about the jobs-housing imbalance, you should look at the SOI, you know, the Sphere of Influence, which is much, much better frankly. And then we should look at what Stanford's proposing to do. They're proposing to build, I forgot, is it 15,000 housing units or something like that?
3,000.
3,000, sorry, 3,000 housing units, right. And how that would impact it and what that looks like. And then the other thing I think we've got to ask ourselves is ever since I've been on this council, we have been fighting our A-BAG numbers. We've been writing letters, we've been complaining about it. And frankly, the way the system is set up is that you get your allocation and anything you don't use, you can roll over. So there's actually incentive to zone for it and not use it. So that's something that we've all taken advantage of frankly. We didn't have a problem doing our housing element because we didn't build it all the previous time, so we could roll over most of it. We got our, we got our housing, our housing A-BAG numbers reduced because we only put one PDA in, and Sunnyvale, for instance, put in, I think, five, so they got, you know, I can't remember the numbers, but they got so much more housing than we got, I sent it all to you at some point. So we have to ask, you know, are we going to, I think the first question you should ask yourself is, do you want to build more housing than you have your A-BAG numbers? Do you want to actually build all your A-BAG allocation? And if so, how are you going to zone for your next allocation? Those are hard questions, but I think we need to think about them as a council. And I also think we really want to focus, I want a fifth scenario that creates a positive quality of life for Palo Alto. That's what I read online, that's what I heard speakers say, that, you know, over the next 15 years, we're degrading the quality of life in Palo Alto. So let's come up with a scenario that I call the quality-of-life scenario. So therefore, I'm going to try a motion. And I don't think the motion that I want to try is the be and all end of, I think council members should add things to it. And I'm not going to think of everything, and I'm not going to try. So I think we should basically say that we want a scenario that adds the sustainability options but goes further to reduce the impacts such as traffic, parking, greenhouse gases, and I'm sure there's a bunch of others, that there's pollution, congestion, that we want to use Palo Alto data when possible. I think there were two sources of that. There was the source of the EVs, there's the source of the Business Registry. To the extent possible, we want to be as Palo Alto-specific as possible. And we want staff to come up with a mitigated scenario that shows quality of life improving. I don't know what all those mitigations are. I think staff should throw out as many as they can. And that includes, you know, reducing job growth, if that's doing it, putting housing...
Are you speaking to your motion now?
Okay, no, I'm putting the motion together. So I was, you're right, I was falling into speaking to a little bit. So a scenario showing quality of life increasing, and then I want to integrate as much as possible the S cap into that scenario.
Okay. Now, do you want to speak to your motion?
I do. I think the important part is to, for the council, and I appreciate if you help me out on this as possible, is when we put this motion together, to go in and add things to it, to have staff look at stuff. And I think the more we look at a positive scenario in here, the more we can show the community that we as a council can have a vision for quality of life, the better off the community will be, the more trust we'll have in the community, and the less this will be a zero-sum game where we talk about, you know, if we increase more housing, we have an impact on the schools. Come up with housing units that have less impact on the schools. Come up with housing units where people are not in their cars. Think about the impacts and come up with a mitigated scenario that is a positive for Palo Alto. Thanks.
Councilmember DeBois.
So is I up next and also speaking to my second?
Well, yes.
Yeah, okay.
And I think because a number of the council members haven't been able to speak to the topic in general, I'll go ahead and encourage council members to do both, speak to the motion and to add their broader comments.
Put some general comments and then I had some potential amendments.
Go right ahead.
So first of all, thanks, thanks for the presentation. I think a lot of these charts were useful. I think there's a danger, and sometimes we're looking at a short part of the curve, and you know, when you really look at a longer part, I think some of these curves are accelerating and we're actually getting into an even worse situation than it appears. So I actually had similar comments to Councilmember Scharf, it's like, what is our goal? And I agree that jobs-housing is really a proxy. I think several people said it's a proxy. I think it's a proxy for kind of the impacts that people are feeling living here. And I disagree that it's just about traffic impacts. I think it's, you know, it's more than that. And ultimately, I think what we're talking about is a bigger picture of where we want Palo Alto to be. And, you know, do we want to be a commuter city and become even more of a commuter city? You know, and what does that look like? Or do we want to be something else? And so even if we're able to handle all the traffic, I think in this jobs-housing proxy is really about what kind of city are we? So, you know, I'd like to see a scenario, one thing we haven't really talked about is kind of downtown. How big of an employment center do we want downtown to be? What kind of companies would we like to see there? I think we've had some discussion about kind of large companies versus small companies. There's been some stories in the press that startups can no longer compete, and I think that's kind of going away from our traditional role. I mean, Palo Alto's been an incubator of a lot of companies in Silicon Valley, and traditionally we've been more of a community with some startups, and when those startups got big, they moved to the bigger office parks in the Bay Area. And so I think there's a question, do we want to continue that or do we want it to And I think, you know, the goal ultimately is pretty similar to the motion, which is, you know, can we come up with a scenario that has no significant impacts, given our direction on slowing office growth, protecting local retail, moderate amount of housing, and then, you know, protecting our urban forest and our parks and our schools? And I'm adding this new idea of a place for smaller companies to thrive. And I had very similar words to Councilmember Scharf, can we have a scenario that improves the quality of life? Can we, basically, for me, that means more of a balanced community. And I think there is an issue with using these top-down forecasts and using more local data, you know, as more relevant. Part of that, I think, we've touched on, is kind of redefining mixed use. We've been getting mixed use, it's predominantly office. And so again, if we had this idea of balance, can we redefine mixed use to provide for more housing, more retail, less office? I also like some of the ideas from members of the public. I think this idea of kind of self-regulation in the comp plan or some kind of triggering makes a lot of sense to me. I think part of the reason we got where we are is, you know, government moves at a certain pace, and we had a comp plan that worked for a long time. We hit a couple of, you know, intense growth periods and it started to be built out to the maximum amount possible, and that hadn't happened before. And so if we had some ideas, like some of these assumptions about the TDM, you know, if we hit 40% downtown, great, but if we don't hit it, rather than just continue along, maybe we should trigger some mechanisms to kick into place. Same thing with single occupancy vehicles, you know, let's put those things in, but what happens if we're going, we're moving along and we're not hitting those targets? And so I actually had, you know, I agree, we should look to staff to kind of come back, but I was kind of looking at, you guys provided us a lot of numbers and charts. You know, if we look at something like the household growth in scenario one and two, and we applied, we figured out kind of an employee ratio based off of that, I think you end up with, you know, applying the ratios in here, you end up with about 3,000 more employed residents. If we had a two to one, we'd be, it comes out to about 6,500 new jobs over the timeframe. And I think we could translate that into an amount of office space and we could kind of plan for that. So I think we can take a look at these assumptions and come up with a scenario that kind of makes sense, whether that translates into a hard cap or just policies that kind of get us in that ballpark. I think we could figure that part out. So I guess I'll add some amendments or offer some amendments to the motion. Just give me a second to read what it says. So I had, I had number one. So I would be interested in to see if we can come up with a scenario that has no significant impacts. And I think that's kind of implied in number two, but...
Yep, that's the plan. I didn't want to say none because it just may be certain, I don't know.
Yeah.
But that's the goal.
Can we say, you know, close to no significant impacts or mitigate?
As much as feasible, if you want, right?
Yeah, so maybe, and two, if we could add mitigating the impacts of future growth and development, as much as feasible. Yeah, so maybe, and two, if we could add mitigating the impacts of future growth and development, as much as feasible. It's right before the seven, my colon. I—I was looking— I don't know if you want to get into the certain scenarios, but I was basically looking at, you know, housing growth from Scenario 2, and jobs growth below Scenario 2. So, again, you know—
So, my—my vision here was for them to come back with a—with a mitigated one, and then provide us with what that looks like, in terms of housing, and in terms of office, frankly. And you might come back—that's really what I was thinking.
Yeah.
What would it look like if it was fully mitigated, and are positive—you know, does that look like—how many housing units could we have? How much office could we have? Would we have to have negative office growth, or, you know, what does this all look like?
I guess I wanted to bring in this idea, again, that it's not just about mitigating, but, you know, what kind of city do we want to have? So, I would add—I guess one thing I would add is that they would propose a mechanism for enforcing densities in existing office buildings. So, that would be number six.
Well, that may be a mitigation that they come up with. I—I don't want to say that they have to do that, because it may not—what I heard was that it wasn't actually possible. That's what I heard from Cara. She was—to—she was towing around it.
She said the businesses are wondering if—
Well—
When the lease renews, or whatever, but—
Could I—
So, thank you for— What I really thought was a really positive step in the Vice Mayor's motion is, it gives some value perspectives and some general direction that I—I think works. Tom, I—I think your comment about the nature or form of downtown employment is more in keeping with that as a kind of consideration, without having to jump to the density issue. That may be a—a way to deal with impacts of it, but the quality or the diversity of the employment, you know, is a general statement that also gives us some direction if there's an interest. And the—the other thing that's missing, in my view right now, is the—on the housing side, people have been speaking about the need for housing for other reasons than just—I mean, they're—they're talking about the diversity of the community in some ways, and the opportunity for people to be able to live in Palo Alto that seems to be—without explicit direction, if you were to ask us about quality of life, we would want to be factoring that in with these other directives. But I do think something—you—you said that earlier, when you were talking about downtown employment, looking at how to redefine mixed use in a way to provide more opportunities for housing. That gives us pretty good direction, without getting us tied down on the way to do it. Initially, we would come back with different methods to reconcile these different issues of managing impact, but also providing the opportunities that you want.
Okay. I guess the thing I'm trying to avoid, you know, I'm not looking for a scenario that is massive amounts of housing, massive amounts of growth, but it's all mitigated. That's not what I'm—that's not where I'm at. I'm not sure if that's—that's not where you're at either.
No, I—I actually don't believe that's possible.
Yeah, okay. Well, so—so again, how about—how about evaluating a mechanism for enforcing densities in existing buildings? Yeah, mechanisms, plural. So, I would make that a point six.
Mr. Mayor, may I make a comment? So, perhaps you'd consider the word regulating in—in place of enforcing? Because one issue we really need to look at is our existing code, and—and—yeah.
That's fine.
And you're talking about employment densities, right, not just densities?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we can add employment in front of densities. And then, the—the last one I'd suggest was this idea of evaluating some regulations. Regulation triggers if mitigation measures are failing. And so, again, this would be for staff to come back with some ideas of, particularly around traffic and parking. Is that clear?
Yeah, well, yeah, the last one's fine.
Okay.
Can you clarify what you mean by a regulation trigger if reg—if mi—oh, if mitigation measures are fa—I see—if mitigation measures, okay.
Thanks. Yeah. Okay, that's it, thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Berman?
Thank you, and—and thank you to everyone from the public who came and spoke, and rightfully went home, and I hope they're hanging out with their kids, or—or spouses. So, you know, the city manager kind of started to talk on—on speak to some things that I wanted to talk about, which is, we talk a lot about impact. And we talk a lot about traffic, and we talk a lot about parking, and we talk a lot about startups versus big companies, and—and we haven't been talking a lot about people. And—and it is Palo Altons, and it is people who live here now, and it's people who are being forced out of here. And—and so, it's not just people's kids that want to come and move back home, but it's—it's families that are having their rents increased dramatically and are being forced to move away. And I've been talking to a lot of people in the area about a lot of things, and—and, you know, they say, why should I care? Why should I care about this? Why should I care about that? Why should I care about more housing? And—and the question that I ask them is, what kind of a community do they want to live in? And—and what kind of a community do they want their kids to grow up in? Because, having grown up in Palo Alto, I know how important it was to me in the eighties and nineties, and—and Corey can relate, to have friends from a vast background of—of socioeconomic—a vast array of socioeconomic backgrounds, and—and kind of what that—what values that instills in you as a child growing up in Palo Alto. And—and it is getting worse and worse and worse. And—and the reason for that isn't because—I mean, you know, the—the idea isn't that everybody should be able to—to move to Palo Alto and buy a home, and I think that's what some people talk to. But we should, you know, in terms of quality of life, how do we—what mechanisms do we use to evaluate the quality of, or the value of—of having some amount of socioeconomic diversity in—in your city? And so, and maybe that's not a—a priority to folks, i-i-it is to me personally. I don't know how to quantify it, but I know that we're losing it. And—and we hear that from people time and time again, who come and speak to council and talk about how the price of their rent has gone up. You know, I studied—there's a—a staff report in Mountain View tomorrow that's gonna say that—the rents have increased fifty percent in Mountain View since 2011. And—and I'm sure Palo Alto isn't any better. And so, you know, when we talk about, oh, i-i—it's impossible to have additional housing, or we can't have that much more housing, you know, i-i—if we can do it in a way that mitigates the impact of it, that's something that I think we should be open to. And I think that's the process, this—that's part of this EIR process, and—and DEIR process, is to throw crazy ideas out there, and—and see what comes back, and—and see what might be possible. And—and so, I—I fear that we're getting too kind of— We're getting too preventative of things, and we're not taking advantage of this opportunity to evaluate a lot of different opportunities, and—and then have a discussion about what those impacts will be. So, you know, I—I think this is okay with where it's going. I'm glad we—we avoided talking about having certain growth projections from the different scenarios, because—because I wouldn't have supported that. But, you know, Vice Mayor Sharp, you talked about our A-bag numbers, and how-how much of a frenzy we'd get in over them. You sent out something, and I looked for it earlier, and I couldn't find it. But was it that Palo Alto—we had something like two thousand units in our last A-bag allocation, right?
Eighteen fifty, I think.
Eighteen fifty, from 2007 to 2014, or something like that? Do you remember what percentage we actually built? I think it was thirty-four.
Yeah, it's about right.
I—I could be wrong, so thirty-four percent, thirty-five percent.
And Mountain View and Sunnyvale, and I forget, no, built about a hundred and—hundred and one, a hundred and four percent.
Yeah.
But we—one person—somebody did point out to me that in the previous cycle, we built a lot.
Hundred and fifty percent.
Yeah.
So, you know, I—
But—but—but let's take a look at that—that jobs to employed residents ratio, and—and look at when things get bad. It's when we don't build the housing. And—and so, you—you know, and—and that historical context would be helpful, of—of, you know, seeing units of housing built, you know, every five years or so, it doesn't need to be annually. But—but so, you know, let's not—you know, let's not restrict ourselves to what we're able to kind of look at and dream big about with this process. Maybe we'll end up getting to a point where, you know, we decide we just can't accommodate that amount of housing. But I think now's the time to try to kind of, you know, see what's possible. Along those lines, I—I'd like to offer an amendment for—and, you know, maybe this isn't even—well, no, I'll—I'll offer it. It's essentially the opposite of six. I mean, i-i—it's evaluating regulation—you know, evaluating relaxing regulations if meg—if mitigation measures are hit, are accomplished.
I'll accept that.
Because I think, you know, we—if—if we do happen to achieve the gains that we're looking to achieve, I think we should acknowledge that and maybe reevaluate certain things. Now, this is all obviously hypothetical, but I think it's something that we should consider. I don't know if the secondor accepts it.
Can you talk a little bit about how that would work?
Sure, I mean, let's say our our TMA efforts yield sixty percent decrease in single occupancy vehicle trips. You know, do we all of a sudden reevaluate what, you know, our—our parking per—per employee, you know, square foot of office space, or housing, or that kind of thing, you know, regulations? If it's clearly being shown that our transportation demand management efforts are working?
Yes. When I proposed six, I was specifically talking about transportation and parking. So, if we could add that clarification to six and seven, I think I'd be okay with that.
Well—
I think it's too large to say that you want to adjust
Sure, I guess I—
Large-scale zoning or something.
I—I—I—
Councilmember DuBois, I'm not sure if they captured this. Is it evaluate transportation and parking regulations, or transportation and parking mitigation measures?
Yeah, I mean, it's—it's both, I guess, I mean—
Okay, so then, pre-seed it, go at the beginning of the sentence, yeah.
And—and I'd be fine with that for—for seven. I mean, obviously, ten years from now, if things are going great, and—and there's no traffic, people can have a different conversation then, but—
Should we just combine these two and say if mitigation measures are—we're just talking about evaluating adjustment—
Sure, or succeeding.
If mitigation measures are failing—
Or succeeding.
Or—or exceeding expectations?
Sure. And I mean, that's all I have for—for now.
Okay. Councilmember Holman?
Yes, thank you. So, I have a question, and I think I need—I think I need Hillary for this. So—so, in the—in the DEIR on where the transportation traffic is analyzed, question and—question and comment. So, I have, and I can't remember what I got it from, but it was a study of LOS done in 2001 by the city. And what I notice in looking at this is that some of the intersections—I've heard nobody say that traffic's gotten better anywhere. But what I notice in a number of the—of the intersections that are analyzed in the DEIR, that the performance levels are actually better than they were in 2001. So, that's a—a concern to me. The other is that the DEIR studies only fourteen intersections in—in 2001, we studied twenty-one. And one of our major intersections that's of great concern to everybody is Page Mill and—and 280, but it's not one of the intersections that's studied. So, I'll give you an example of—so, El Camino and Page Mill, it's indicated here that—and these are AM and PM peak hours, but there's a—a D and an E. And in 2001, it was an E-plus. And I remember that when we were reviewing a project for the—I believe it was for the VTA lot, that—it may have been either that, or the pro—project on Page Mill that was approved, but I think it was the VTA lot. And the analysis at that time said that intersection was performing at an F. So, I'm—I'm concerned about the accuracy of the LOS analysis, both in terms of accuracy, in terms of the number of intersections it studies, and this—and in particular, the omission of Page Mill and 280. So, can you address any of that? I mean, when—in doing this analysis, did—did anybody go back to the—the existing EIR for the existing— or—the EIR for the existing comp plan, to look at what intersections were analyzed, and what the performance was then?
Thank you, Councilmember Holman, for those questions. I—I—I don't know if someone went back and looked at the old EIR. We collected new intersection data, and developed a new travel forecast model that was validated using that existing data. So, there's really a new methodology here. It's not surprising that some of the intersections are different. And actually, those of us who were at the Silicon Valley Index presentation learned that the year 2000, 2001, were— In fact, the speaker kept referring to 2000 as an anomaly. It was higher in terms of jobs than we are today. It was really a spike. So, there could be some characteristics around 2000, 2001, that you're seeing in that data, that, you know, would—would be an expl—explanation for any difference regarding— And—and I'd have to have the engineers delve into it in more detail to get you a more specific answer about the—the results there. In terms of the number of intersections studied, as the council knows, we're in this really critical period right now, where the state is shifting away from level of service. And so, we had resources to spend on transportation analysis, and we chose to spend those resources getting a variety of different metrics that we could display for the council and the—the public with regard to transportation impacts. And I think you see that in the EIR, you see more metrics, vehicle miles traveled, vehicle miles per capita, focused on transportation and mode share, and trips, internal, external, all of that stuff, that wouldn't have been in a 2001 EIR. And we had to choose intersections to do—to analyze along with that. We chose thirteen intersections that we think are representative and a good sample of the city. If the council wanted us to study more, obviously, we—we would just have to allocate the additional resources to do—to do that.
So, thank you for the note about 2001. I guess—I guess what I'm responding to, too, is the fact that nobody seems to think that transportation or traffic has gotten anything—any—any better since that period in time. The numbers are the numbers, but—I—but there is a recent thing about the Page Mill and El Camino. That was an F when that project came forward for analysis, so—but here, it only shows it as being—wherever it was? It's only showing it as being a D and an E. So— So, those are concerns, and I think Page Mill and 280, I think, would be a significant one. If we leave it out, we're being really amiss in what we're analyzing, because that's a bad intersection, and we all get comments about that one regularly. So, I mentioned earlier about changing what we use as our threshold for impacts. And Palo Alto has a much higher, for instance, threshold than Menlo Park. We use the four-second Menlo Park's a zero. We've talked—uh, point eight, I'm sorry, a point eight in Menlo Park. I think this would be the time to change what we use for measuring our—our impacts, and I'll come back to that in a moment. In terms of zoning for housing, yes, it was—I believe it was 2004, 2005, when housing was the go-to development. That's when we got the Hyatt Riki's project was—was developed. So, you know, it is the zone for what you want. So, just because we zone for it, it doesn't get built at one point in time. If we zone for it, it can be built. And when the market shifts, it will be, at some point in time, because the—when the market shifts, there—the zoning is—that accommodates it, so a—a cautionary step there. Could I add in— Could I add in number one here in the motion, because I think it is such a critical one? Could we add noise specifically there, the maker and secondor? I know it says et cetera, but could we add noise there specifically?
Yeah.
Okay, good. Thank you. And number six. Oh, wait a minute. It's actually not there. It's number two. Well, it's kind of like a combination of number two and number six. So directing staff to come up with further mitigations for a scenario that improves the quality of life in Palo Alto, I like that a lot. But what we have trouble doing in Palo Alto, not that we're alone in this, but what we have trouble doing here is enforcing the mitigations. And so I think without identifying also what mitigation methodologies are, we're missing part of the, part of the thing here because, you know, we can say we're going to require TDM programs, for instance, for a project, but if it isn't an enforceable TDM program, we're getting what we're getting now. So what I'm looking for is, I guess, probably a number two would be direct staff to come up for the medications along with mitigation enforcement plan.
So I don't think that goes in an EIR. I mean, if I'm wrong, let me know.
Well, this isn't, this isn't a new scenario that we're doing here. We're asking staff to come back with this. But if we can't have staff come back with something that includes how they would enforce the mitigations, so this isn't, this isn't the DEIR version that we're looking at here.
It's a supplement to the EIR.
Well, I read this as staff develop fifth scenario for analysis. So what I'm looking at is the staff to come back with their thoughts on how this might play out. And then when they come back with something to us before May, then we would develop the fifth scenario. I didn't think we were telling them right now to say this is what we want.
And do you mean mitigation enforcement plan or measures?
Measures. So is your intention that this is the direction for the fifth scenario or for staff to come back and give us their thoughts on this?
No, it's the direction for the fifth scenario. But in a scenario, I mean, obviously, everything staff comes up with, I would expect them to be able to enforce, right? I mean.
Well.
Well.
Do we?
I guess I was, if I might jump in. I was thinking that the motion isn't assuming we would come back with the fifth scenario, but that we could, we could come up with.
Options.
Alternatives and options that begin to put more definition to the choice, and then you give us that direction. So I get a little bit too concerned about having to make it super concrete at this stage, so I just would not put a whole lot of doodads on.
If this was added along with prospective mitigation enforcement measures?
Well, that helps. Yeah. Because I really think we're going to come back with, you know, some hydraulics about where the housing and the job piece is, and obviously, you may feel differently if you could 100% mitigate something for transportation. It may affect the way you would set those numbers. And then I think you're going to have a more focused discussion on what the final fifth solution is that you want to settle on.
And that's what I thought the motion was about. So thank you for, that's what I think, was thinking that the motion was about was what Jim just said.
Could I just interject something? I want to make sure that we're on the same page. I don't want to kind of overpromise or have the council feel like we're going to be able to do more than, than I think we can do. We are not, I think, equipped to take the direction, develop a whole another range of scenarios and present you with a whole range of options, you know, another four scenarios to bounce off each other and compare. I think we are fully ready to go back and look at the mitigation measures in the document, see if there's a way in compliance with number five and number six up there to make them a little more iterative, you know, so they'll drive themselves to be better and better, and look at how to better integrate with the S cap and the like. But I think our thought was we would come back to you with a package of things responsive to this direction that we think would constitute a good fifth scenario for the council to tinker with and adjust. I'll just tell you right now, we can try to mitigate impacts of traffic, but a lot of the impacts that you're seeing in the book and the I-280 intersection is in there as a freeway ramp, not as an intersection. A lot of the impacts you're seeing is because we are part of a regional system, and there's a lot of traffic in the area that has nothing to do with the job and housing growth that we're seeing as part of our scenarios. So I'm saying, I'm committing, we're going to do our best to come back with a mitigated scenario as a proposal to you for the fifth scenario, but I just don't want to fool anybody that we're going to be able to get to, like, yay, no impacts, because we just probably won't be able to get there on traffic.
So let's, could I just, could we argue a little bit here between each other? I feel like this is one of the best conversations the council has had as it relates to the comp plan about getting to the nub of the direction you want to see the city going in, and yet we're not there yet. And what, what has been happening is we've been developing some fairly fleshed out things, and we can kind of come back and you kind of, no, that's not quite right, you know? And we put a lot of effort into that, and the need for a fifth scenario is a perfect example of that. I don't think we can go back with this idea of developing anything to the degree of what we have here already. What we need to be able to come back and say is, okay, let's see, if we had this level of jobs, and this, let's just take the range of housing that you have under the highest range of housing we have as a 15% increase over the next 15 years in the housing from the baseline. So if we even said, okay, well, if you accepted something like that as a scenario, that's 1% more housing per year over 15 years, what, what would that start to look like as far as either mitigation conditions you might roughly want to think about? Same thing on the office side, where you could really come back and, I don't mean to be presumptuous, but, you know, I think it's pretty clear where the council is tending to want to go on less office and some degree of housing. And the sooner we could get to that specifically, the better we could really start to imagine how we could both have those things happen in the plan ultimately, but then try to say, what are the other things we need to do to try to mitigate those things over time? So then the TDM issues, and if we end up having tax measures to fund things to help invest, all those things start to come together in a more meaningful way. So I still think we need to come back a little bit more vaguely, but with more meat on the bone about what is going to happen sooner than later, and then you give us more specific direction, say that's what we're looking for. Because I'm afraid that we would try to figure out right now again what the best one of those would be, and we could still come back and you would say that wasn't quite it.
If I can just make sure again, we're on the same page. I guess we're trying to figure out what it is that we would analyze for you as a fifth scenario. I don't, I hope, I hope that's consistent with what you're saying. Are you saying we're going to analyze a bunch of stuff, and then we're going to come back and?
I don't think the council's in agreement, but I'm sorry to be this presumptuous, but I think there is a majority of the council that would ultimately say, you know what, particularly if we can't significantly mitigate it or even completely mitigate it, we clearly want a jobs number that is less than what we have in any of the scenarios right now growing in some fashion. And we also understand there's a need for housing, and there may be a range of opinions that the council has about what that housing number would be. But again, to the extent that some of those things can be mitigated, it allows some flexibility at what that level would be. And you could almost pretty quickly get that clear, and then you direct us to go out and really flesh out everything. It will be, we'll be much more efficient and much more on target with what your vision is as a council as to where you want us to go.
Could I make a real quick comment?
So I, we've stuck at the floor, I think, but.
Just, I'm sorry. So I think the, yep. Thank you. With that, I think what we're missing, or what we started with, was in the motion, there's nothing here that, in the motion itself, is outside what's already done in the book. Right? I think, I don't know if that's what you were asking for, Hillary, but I think what Jim was saying was, I don't know if we need to be explicit, but I explicitly was looking for an evaluation of job growth lower than anything in here. So I don't know if we need to be that clear in the motion.
So.
Evaluation of job growth higher, and I think we should do an evaluation of housing higher.
I've stuck at the floor, I believe.
Okay. Let's return to Councilmember Holman.
So I agree with what, I think I agree with what you were saying, Councilmember DuBois, is that we were looking at, and what city manager was saying, that we're looking at less job creation, less, less office creation and more housing creation, and we don't know to what extent. So if we can add that, if the maker.
We can add that.
Okay.
May I suggest language in the existing Roman numeral five? If we simply changed it to evaluate, and shouldn't be evaluating in both five and six, should be evaluate mechanisms for regulating employment growth, including densities in existing buildings. Does that capture it?
It does.
Regulating doesn't say reduce current trend or current allowance.
If I could offer, I mean, I think what Pat said is fine, but doesn't capture.
Yeah.
And number two, if we could say a scenario that improves the quality in life in Palo Alto by mitigating the impacts of future growth and development, assuming growth, job growth below scenario two.
Mayor Bird, if I could just ask a follow-up question to that. I think that's great and clear direction. The question is whether there, you could articulate how you might, how we might accomplish that beyond what you've said in number five.
Well, first, we have to make sure the maker accepts it.
Then I'm not going to accept that. What I really want you to do is to come up with, to come up with it. I don't want to tell you how we come up with that. If you can come up with it, great. So I think assuming isn't, I would say, and look at, and look at job growth below scenario two. I'm not going to tell you how to do that. I mean, there may not be a mechanism to do that, or there may be, but you're the planner. I mean.
Well, I think we need to give more direction on our intent, and maybe the wording that was proposed is not perfect on that.
So David, could you put it back so we could edit it?
Mayor Bird, if I can, if I can respond to that. You know, I think we are pretty clear in the staff report about the policy levers that we included already in scenario two, which has the lowest job growth, and some additional levers that could be included to reduce job growth further. And there, some of them are scary things. You know, we're talking about downzoning commercial areas of Palo Alto where property owners have an expectation of floor area ratio. So I think we need to know from the council just how aggressive you want us to be and whether those ideas we posited in the report are things you want to pursue, or whether you want to try and do it through this regulation of employment densities.
So may I offer a location where maybe that belongs better in five? If it was to, say, evaluate mechanisms for regulating employment below scenario two? And I don't think we have to say including densities in existing buildings. Does that capture?
That's fine.
I guess it works. It seems like we're mixing two different ideas in that sentence, but.
Really?
But then we need to get rid of, and assuming job growth below scenario two.
Okay. Councilmember Holman?
Yes. I think number five now is kind of mixing two things. It's, we're talking about office development and then regulating employment. They're two different things. So I think that doesn't strike what Councilmember DuBois was after. It says, you know, evaluate mechanism for regulating employment densities in existing buildings, and another bullet would be evaluate lower employment, excuse me, excuse me, office, general office and R and D development than scenario two. That's what, R and D, that's what would make it clear.
Do you really mean to limit it to general office and R and D, or is it jobs?
Well.
I'm fine with, I think separating the two are fine, but I didn't know that the intent was specifically to.
Well, I'm just trying not to.
Those categories of employment.
I'm just trying not to include retail and personal service. And generally, how we've talked about office caps has been general office and R and D.
Well, that's a proposal to the maker and secondor.
You know.
And that would take it out of number five.
I think we're getting beyond the intent, which was if staff can come up with a quality of life one without going to the more extreme measures, which I've heard Hillary talk about, I think that's good. If you can only do it by coming up with the extreme measures, then go and suggest to us that this is what it'll take. That's what I want. I don't want, that's the direction I want. I want to know what it is broadly, and so I'm not going to accept that.
Is there a second, if I offered a separate amendment? And the reason is because I wanted to be clear what the policy direction would be to, to staff.
Well, you need to first see if you have a second before speaking to it.
Okay. Okay, good. So that means that it would come out of, that means that five would go back to what it was before? And, yeah, so just briefly and quickly, it's, it's not to try to be too prescriptive. Wait a minute, what happened? Okay. So. Somebody else has kind of watched us while I'm trying to speak to this. So not really trying to be too prescriptive, just trying to give policy direction to staff that our indication is, or inclination is that we want to lower office, general office development in favor of housing. So if we're, you know, we don't even have to put in in favor of housing because we're losing, reducing office development, then we're obviously in favor of housing, too, I would think. So. Councilmember Niss?
Councilmember Niss, did you want to speak to your second?
Yes. And the reason I seconded this is that I think most of this is, is pretty general, and I think probably that is exactly what we're going to look at. So I think it is prescriptive, but I think it also gets very definitive, which we've been talking about kind of going all around the barn on this, but that's really what we're talking about. Are we going to evaluate a, a general office and R and D development that, that is lower?
Okay. So there are two of us who haven't spoken in general terms at all on the subject. Councilmember Phil, Seth, and myself, I think, are the only two. And, well, and actually, Councilmember Niss.
About an hour and a half ago.
Longer.
And, and if we go into a protracted debate on just this one amendment to the motion, we're not going to get to complete our discussion tonight. So what I want to encourage people is, I'm not sure that we need to debate this to be able to vote on it. Now, you have a right to do so, but I'd rather not clear the board. I see a bunch of, well, I think I better, this is just getting too confusing here. So what I'd like to do is encourage folks to not speak to this motion unless they really feel a burning necessity to do so. I think it's pretty clear to everybody what this means and what the alternative means, and we don't have to hear from nine of us to understand that. So I encourage people to move forward and we'll vote on it and then move on to the main motion. But if anybody feels the necessity to speak to it, hit your lights. All right. So then we will just vote on the amendment, which is basically a new five. Is that what it is? Is that correct?
It doesn't replace five. Five would change, though, because.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's a modified five, right? Is that what we're looking at?
It wouldn't replace five, because five has densities in buildings in it.
Okay, where is, oh, I see, it's down below now, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
So it's...
So this would be a new...
So it's down under amendment.
And then number five would, and then number five would change if this passes.
Okay, let's vote on the board, evaluate lower general office and R and D development than is in scenario number two. Okay, that passes on a five to four vote, with Councilmember Schmidt, DeBois, Bert, Niss, and Holman voting yes. Okay, so now we come back to the main motion, and Councilmember Philsath, and then Niss, and then me.
Can, can we make sure that number five up here, I'm sorry, can we make sure that number five over here now goes back to the prior number five?
Yeah, yeah, I'll let you guys work that out while we're holding discussions, the maker and...
And then I did have one other thing.
Okay.
Which was to put on the board for staff to come back with any comments having to do with reducing our LOS threshold to zero. Or threshold, or impacts threshold, to zero.
I'm afraid we're not, we're not really following what your intention is, and we do have the, the new state law that's going to prevent us from doing that.
Let me see first whether we even have a second before we get staff discussion on it. And I don't hear a second.
And just, the motion was to change the city's thresholds for measuring LOS impacts from our current level, our current threshold, to a zero, zero second. Or 0.8 is what Menlo Park has, but we could go to zero. And by the way, the state, state...
I, I don't hear a second.
SEQA has gone to VMT, but I think the council's made comments about...
Okay, you're speaking to a motion that has not been seconded.
No, I'm speaking to a comment that Hillary made.
Well, okay. Let's, we've, we've got, you, you offered a motion, we didn't get a second. Let's move on to Councilmember Philsath.
Thanks very much. So, I, I think we're way, way down in the weeds here, and we may be below the weeds with the gophers, but, so, so I agree with the City Manager that I think this is one of the most fundamental and important decisions we've had as a council in, you know, our tenure, this council, right? I think this is going very much the right direction, right? We're talking about objectives, and, you know, fundamentally, there's three, and I think the appropriate thing is to give staff very broad direction on this, as opposed to trying to engineer something in great detail. You know, there are basically three axes here, three levers to pull, right? Job growth, housing growth, and mitigation, and we've asked staff to go at, see what they can do to try to minimize, minimize impact on quality of life, and I think that's entirely, entirely appropriate. The one thing that I would comment on that is, I think this is really, really good stuff and really important stuff, okay? This council has asked for a quantitative dimension to this discussion, to get, to, to supplement what's been up until now a qualitative and even at some level religious discussion about where we ought to go, and I think this is really good, and it adds a, it adds a dimension that's very valuable. The lesson from this is that all four scenarios, okay, make traffic, pollution, all kinds of things worse, okay? And furthermore, it's very clear that the least impact of all these things comes from scenario two, the slow growth scenario, and the most impact, if you, if you discount scenario one, which is sort of tied, the most impact actually comes from scenario four, which is the full-on smart growth model. And the lesson from that is that the negative impacts follow growth, and that no amount of mitigation can fully mitigate those things. I mean, that is what this study says. So, as we talk about this, you know, we talk about the discussion we're having now is, you know, how do we enforce mitigation and so forth? And I think there's a trap here, okay? I mean, mitigation, you don't want it to have a, be a, you know, sort of a buzz term like, you know, clean coal or something like that, and I realize that probably has made a lot of enemies in the fossil fuel business, right? But mitigation is not sort of have-it-all card that forces you not to make choices. I think the answer to this is, we are going to have to make choices, right? You can't mitigate at all. And so that's where the levers are going to come from, and I think we need to give staff sort of the flexibility to come up with that, and, and clearly, they're going to look at, look at options below, below the scenario two, to job growth and so forth. The other reason that I think, by extension, this is really important, is that this doesn't tell you, and I think this is really fundamental, right? This doesn't tell you which scenario to take, okay? You decide which scenario, or combination of scenario, or combination of factors, based on what you want to achieve. So, if your top priority is traffic, okay, then you're going to, and air pollution and so forth, then very clearly, you're going to lean towards something closer to the scenario two side of the spectrum. If your top priority is that Palo Alto should compete with San Francisco and San Jose to get all the good tech jobs, okay, then you're going to skew towards scenario four, okay? The DER doesn't tell you which way to go. You know, it's our job as council, and our job is vision, policy, and oversight to do that. And that's really important, because whether we like it or not, we're going down the path of looking at what kind of city we want to be, okay? And this is, that's why this is so important, right? Because we're making sort of, you know, decisions, but that's the direction we're going. So, for a long time, we've sort of been at this crossroads, or approaching a crossroads, of what do we want to be? Historically, Palo Alto has been a moderate-density, family suburb with great schools and great services, right? If you want to continue that direction, then we've got to go the direction that, that you're closer to what we're talking about tonight. And so Commissioner Scharf's, or Councilmember Scharf's motion of the low-impact, the low-impact scenario clearly points us towards that direction. If what you want here is to build a fourth regional metroplex in the mid peninsula, next to Stanford and Sand Hill Road, right, then you'd push for the aggressive growth scenario. That's not what we're doing here. So everybody needs to be cognizant that, that, you know, that is sort of the direction we're leaning, and people need to understand that, right? Now, I think most people want to do the former, and I think most, most of us here understand that, and that's why we're going this direction. So the last thing I want to say is, I want to comment very briefly on housing. I'm going to ask a staff a question. I don't think I'm going to propose an amendment, because I think our direction to staff should be very broad tonight. We are going to take up housing on the March 23rd, I think, and so I assume that what I'm going to ask here is more appropriate for them. But, given the great likelihood that the answer to the question Councilmember Scharf has asked is going to come back and say, you know, in order to achieve the quality of life scenario, you know, we're going to want to have relatively modest housing growth, and I think everybody's sense is that the place we should try to help first, and the place we should put our efforts, right, is sort of on the lower and middle-income kind of, kind of sector, right? I think that's going to be consistent, because if we can't, we can't, you know, help everybody, right? And I think, you know, I don't, I don't see a lot of value to the community in prioritizing a lot of, a lot of new market rate housing, because I think people can afford to live here, you know, they can, they, they can work with that as it is today. But if we're going to try to find ways of encouraging housing that facilitates middle-income and lower-income kind of, people that can't live here now, okay, and assuming that there's no way you can build enough to lower the market price, I'm guessing that's a discussion we should have on the 21st, as opposed to trying to put it in an amendment to this motion tonight, but I want to ask staff's opinion on that.
I think we, well, we agree with you. I also take the opportunity to say that I think the overall way you framed it, we, we agree with. This is still going to be an iterative process with the council. We're going to come back with this assignment with stuff you like and stuff you don't like, but I think it will be clearer than where you are right now, so you'll be in a better position to go shopping or mix and match in the way that you want to do it.
Wait, I didn't really want to have to make choices. Sorry, just go, go ahead.
No, and so the discussion that we have in, in March will help inform that dialogue too, as it relates to the housing component.
Okay, all right, in that case, I will not make an amendment, and I'll propose an amendment, and I will cede the floor. Thanks.
Councilmember Niss?
Well, I think, I think we've come a long way. I don't disagree with Jim, but there are a couple of things that, that I want to say in general, and some history data. And I, I don't know if we can turn back the sands of time, I'm not sure we can do that, but maybe we can stay in place. But if we are going to talk about housing, as I look at it, staff, I'm, I'm going to ask you this to nod and smile or something, I see that in 2000, we had about 26,000 units, and then in 15 years later, we had about 29,000. In that length of time, our population went from 15,000 to 65,000. Is that right? Fifty-five to 65. Did I say it, say it the other way around? And in that length of time, what happened is that some locations came up, because our economy was really in the dumps. We are making decisions about the next comp plan in an economy we have not seen probably ever in this valley. So we are making, it's kind of like we're buying a new house, and we both have fabulous jobs, and we're both making lots of money, and we say, you know what, we really can afford that $2 million house. Well, I was just thinking, where would that $2 million house be? It wouldn't be here. Yes, it might be someplace around us. Sunnyvale. But if we really are talking about adding housing, especially low-income, especially that kind of middle-of-the-road housing, you've got to think of where is the location going to be? Where, what location? Where can you possibly find a location in Palo Alto? So then, let's say we try, we'll try the accessory dwelling units. I feel so bad that I've been there and done that. I know what happens. Somebody is going to complain about the parking, because you've got more people living in the same area, which I tend to think may also be happening in the whole downtown region. I think more people are living per house, because it's so much more expensive. So when your rent is $4,000 a month for a two-bedroom, you can certainly get two people in it, maybe you can even get three or four. Actually, people used to do that. People really actually used to do that. So if our major issue here is quality of life, which it is, I have never seen a candidate's brochure without listing they intended to improve the quality of life in Palo Alto. That's an enormous order. So we're saying tonight, staff, come back with us, come back to us with something that improves our quality of life. And in truth, a lot of people actually like this quality of life, or they wouldn't have been here tonight telling you how desperately they need housing. We're doing something right, even though I, I'm sort of hearing some self-flagellation tonight. I think we're actually doing some things right. Should we stay in place? Should we grow a little bit? Are we slow growth? Are we no growth? Are we some growth? And I think that's really where we are, is where are we actually going with, with this whole procedure? This is, I don't know if I can hold it up as well as Eric did. It's going to take me two hands. I, I went to weigh it today. Is it eight pounds, is that roughly? Didn't any of you weigh it? I think it's about eight. I tried to figure it out. It's somewhere... Well, I could do it like that. I, I think it's somewhere in that. It's, you know, it's almost 900 pages, and I would think that maybe Eric is the only one up here that's read it from cover to cover, and I know he did. Well, pretty close. So I, I think, I think this is a good way to go. I think, Jim, I appreciated your saying, good discussion tonight, but we've given you a big amount to cover. The last comp plan took six years. I think we're only at, what, a year and a half now, or two? Three?
On this iteration.
Ten? Oh, I forget, long before I got here, right? So, you know, we, we need to head somewhere, but I want us to really think carefully. You cannot add housing without adding traffic, and you can't have the traffic without exacerbating, exacerbating the parking. So you really do have to think, how are you going to pull this all together? It's tough. And, thank you, staff, for stepping up to the plate, and Jeremy, I'm sure sad you're going. That's it, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. So, I have a few comments. First, I think this motion has done a good job of, of pointing us in the right direction. There's one area that I have been looking for how to fold in the type of housing that we would have under these scenarios, and this, staff had asked about this, and I think maybe we should respond to that, just so that there's some guidance on the type and location of housing.
I thought staff just said March 23rd, we're going to do it, and Eric was talking about making the type of housing, and said, wait.
So, are you comfortable with this motion not addressing types of housing within this scenario? Is staff comfortable with waiting on that?
Yeah, I, I think we understand where the council's headed. In fact, these scenarios already kind of move in that direction, and we'll look to move further in that direction.
So, I do want to just say a couple higher-level things and a few specifics. So, one is, you know, Arthur had spoken about a, a jobs, housing, transportation triad, and I think that's, that's a good analogy. I also would say that, for those who have been arguing that we should be looking at just addressing the housing supply and not recognizing that the greatest impact on our jobs-housing imbalance that has been exacerbated in recent years has been the rate of growth of jobs, not the rate of growth of housing. In the last few years, we've had significantly less housing built than in the previous seven years, but really, the biggest problem has been we've far outpaced housing with the job growth, and addressing, just trying to have the, the housing keep up with real fast job growth is really like a, a dog trying to chase its own tail. It just doesn't work. Now, second, I, I do want to respond to characterizations of the choices that we have as being between a mid-size college town and, and a fourth regional megaplex. I think both of those are false. We haven't been a mid-size college town for, since the 60s and 70s, when Stanford Research Park became fairly fully built out and was absolutely the center and the founding force of Silicon Valley. And that research park has close to 30,000 employees, and it hasn't been, it was largely built out in the 70s. So I, I, we haven't been just a, merely a mid-size college town, and, and I think all of us honestly know that when you, when you speak to people outside of this area, they recognize that Palo Alto has a role beyond that. And I know of very few people in this community, there are a few, but very few people who have any aspiration to make us a megaplex either. So I really think both of those are false choices or characterizations, and I think the sooner we stop portraying these alternatives in that way, the better we get down to the meat of what we're really trying to address, which is this: How do we contend... How do we contend with not only maintaining our quality of life, but in terms of traffic congestion, regaining a quality of life? I think that's the, an objective that we need to, to have here. And then the other thing I want to do is, is really disagree with, with some of my, several of my colleagues who have thought that there's really no, almost no way to, to mitigate the traffic impacts. We, we're sitting here and this, we have to distinguish between what's evaluated in these scenarios and the mitigation measures and what we have in our, the policy behind our Transportation Management Agency, which is a 30% reduction in single occupancy vehicle trips to downtown. And when we look at these scenarios, and if we look down under total, excuse me, under mode share for Palo Alto drive alone, the best scenario that we're looking at is a 3% reduction in drive alone, citywide. So we have to realize what's evaluated here is one order of magnitude less reduction than what we have already adopted as a policy for downtown. Now, if we don't believe that that's even remotely achievable, then we have an obligation to revise that policy. But I know that Councilmember Ness was one of the people who actually spearheaded that. So we've got to realize that our old thinking, when, when you and others put forward this TMA with this goal, it, it said, no, we actually believe and must address a whole new way that we do things so that we don't have that direct correlation between either housing or jobs and trips. And so I think that's what we're really looking at. We've, we've had our study session and our S-CAP Retreat Summit. And in each of those, we all went through looking at what the future could look like, both what we could do by turning knobs on addressing this and what's changing in part, regardless of what we do. And there are some very fundamental changes. We, we all know that we have a lot of millennials who not only don't have cars, they don't bother to have driver's licenses. And 20 years ago, when we had urban planners tell us that if we densified downtown, we'd have a certain amount fewer trips, well, they were right to some degree. But it wasn't going to be the kind of change that we might have going forward. And I, just to give a scenario so people are thinking about this, as we go into housing downtown, one of the real advantages of having adopted a residential permit parking program is that we can do some things we never could do before. If we previously had said, well, we think that if we have very small units downtown of, of studios and one-bedrooms, small units, and we'll get people who will drive less. And in going forward in the future, they might drive a lot less. But we'd have a real distrust, say, well, what happens if that fails? They're just going to park in the neighborhoods. And we can now approve projects, whether they're commercial or residential in the downtown areas, that say they're not eligible to, to buy RPP permits. And so it has to manage that. And, and the developer will have to park for what they know, or they can't rent the dang places. So that's a new way of thinking on it. So I, I just want us to kind of break free from some of our antiquated ways of looking at things that were right in their day and aren't right today. Now, we don't know exactly what the future's going to bring in terms of how far this is going to be able to go. And I think that anybody who says, well, it's a piece of cake, we're going to be able to reduce it by 30% or do all these things, that's, that's, it may be in part wishful thinking, or just, I'd say it's uncertain. It may be achievable, but nobody quite knows it because we haven't done it yet, neither have others. But we certainly see very strong trend lines. So I want to encourage us to not blindly assume that everything will take care of itself and also not assume that the past determines the future. So on that note, I'll support the motion. Now, I see we've got some people who want to speak again to this motion. Let's be real brief. Councilmember Wolbach.
Thank you. First, let me say, I think I agree with just about everything that the mayor just said. Kind of stepping back and looking at this, and I like this, by the way. I do like this motion. I thank you for giving me a chance to speak to it. What's kind of interesting is that this motion is essentially, in many ways, a reframing and re-characterization and maybe just a different look at something that was actually rejected by the council previously, which was the net zero proposal. And that a previous council had said, that's scary, we don't like it. But I think we've now realized that the focus here is on quality of life. The focus is on net zero impacts on the neighborhood. I hope I didn't just jinx it by pointing that out. But I always liked the net zero, and I think that this is good. So I appreciate Councilmember Scharf and, Vice Mayor Scharf and Councilmember DuBois for putting this together and those who've added amendments. Now, regarding housing, which is not mentioned here at all, and I understand that there's a meeting coming up at which we're going to discuss housing. I'm very much looking forward to that, as you can all guess. In the staff report, it says that we can do, basically, there's the invitation to offer a direct fifth scenario for about $150,000. Is this our last chance to add a sixth scenario for $50,000? There is basically a two-for-one deal, which is, you know, the first new scenario is 150 grand. Another new scenario beyond that is an additional 50 grand. And what I'm concerned about is that we've lost sight of the core direction that we offered back in January, which was to actually talk about jobs-housing imbalance. I understand that some people have maybe changed their views on that since then, referring to it as a straw man or red herring. I still think that the jobs-housing balance is important. You know, Scenario Four and Scenario Three add, you know, quite a bit more housing, but they also add a lot of jobs, so they really don't address that. I don't think that housing and housing cost and housing-to-jobs balance are impacts that need to be mitigated that are identified here. So I'm very concerned that the idea of some kind of a moonshot jobs-housing balance will not be studied by, if this scenario is described here. So I'd like to see either an amendment that does that or possibly a sixth scenario, which would really refocus on what we were, I thought we were going to be talking about tonight, which was jobs-housing balance. So the question is, do we need to do that tonight? Or can we do that following our discussion about housing? I think that tonight is the night to do that, though.
Could I just jump in? So first of all, I understand the point. I think it would be a mistake at this stage to say, let's add a sixth scenario, let us come back. I mean, you will look at what is offered and you'll, you'll be able to decide whether or not the scenario you're settling on is complete enough. And then secondly, I'm going, going back to something that Councilmember Filsa said is, the more general this is in some ways, the easier it is for us. Unless the council would say something differently, I didn't see that the focus on quality of life and the kinds of things you've said in general related to housing and for different demographics or whatever is precluded by what this motion is here because it's not explicitly called out. Because we're not coming back with the fifth scenario. We're going to bring back some more details and some, some ways of framing these things that will enable you to settle on that. If you really feel that it's necessary, then I would say you better tell us. But I was planning on being sure that the staff came back with some recommendations related to housing even under this scenario.
So in that case.
But that's what I'm saying. I'm also looking at the mayor.
I appreciate that. In that case, I'll offer a friendly amendment, which I think dovetails well with Item Six, which is here now. The friendly amendment would be to evaluate higher housing growth than Scenario Four. You know, if we're going to look at lower office growth than Scenario Two, I think we should also balance that out. I don't think it would hurt to evaluate higher scenario, uh, off, housing growth than Scenario Four. That's the friendly amendment, hopefully.
So, you know, I voted against the, the other one, but I will accept your friendly amendment.
I'd like to vote on this separately. Actually, I do think it's a sixth scenario, really, what you're talking about. But so let's vote on the amendment by itself.
So.
Okay.
If I might jump in, I think that that's somewhat open-ended. If it were evaluate higher housing than Scenario Four is, how many units?
That's the most.
Higher than the most, oh.
Yeah, that's, that's the point. The six identified, or lower job will specifically office and RD than the lowest. It broadened the range of discussion for study. I'm suggesting that while.
No, I understand what you're saying. So I was more interested in something that would be allowing Number Four, provided that it had fully mitigated or severely mitigated impacts on trips and schools.
So that's sort of how I understood it. I'm probably understanding it wrong. I wasn't going to put a cap on, of, up to Four. But the whole notion of this is that it's fully mitigated, this whole motion. So, well, that was my argument when you guys voted against me on the office cap. I know the whole thing. So, so on, on adding the R and D. So I'm fine with it the way Mayor Burt said it. Doesn't have to be, I don't think it needs to say up to Scenario Four. I just want to see the housing that, that creates the quality of life, which means mitigated. And, I mean, I think a lot of ways, what you and Mayor Burt both talked about, which is, you build the housing downtown, you have no parking, and it should show up as no parking, and that should be mitigated. How much housing could we have that's mitigated? I, I mean, I didn't expect them to come back with more than Scenario Four, frankly. But I wasn't going to say it, but if Mayor Burt feels that, that you might want to accept that.
So that, that was not my intention.
Okay.
I appreciate that, but that was not, that was not the purpose of hoping to see an expanded study.
And just to clarify, the whole idea.
We're not picking here, we're just talking about a study.
Whole idea of this mix and match thing was any, any number already covered in here, we've got done, right? So that's why we said jobs below what was in here, because it's something new. That's why you're proposing housing above what's in here, because it's something new.
I want to see what the impacts would be.
So I completely misunderstood. I just was wanting to see what the highest housing number we could have without, without impact. That's all.
I think this already identifies that, and that's what the mayor, or the city manager was suggesting. And that's why I'm offering this in addition to that. Because I think that's.
So that's now, has you're.
I withdrew it.
He's withdrawn his.
It doesn't matter, he didn't accept it anyway.
So we'll, we'll offer it as a second amendment, as a separate amendment. So I'd offer.
Yeah, we heard it.
Which is, yeah.
Wait, we'll just see if there's a second. No second. Councilmember Berman.
I guess, you know, I just want to make a kind of macro statement that we might have to consider when we come back to talk about housing. But we talk here about direct staffs. I'll come up with further mitigations along with prospective mitigation enforcement measures for a scenario that improves the quality of life in Palo Alto. But I don't know that we've ever defined what the quality of life in Palo Alto means. And we talk a lot about how it means, you know, transportation and parking and how many seconds you have to wait in an intersection. But we don't talk at all about whether or not it includes socioeconomic diversity or the ability of renters to stay in their homes or any of that kind of stuff. So to me, it does. So I'll take this opportunity to say, staff, to me, that's what that means. But I think we, as a council, need to probably have a conversation about that, you know, so that we all know what we're talking about when we throw around this term that we throw around every five minutes. One more quick point is, is, you know, looking at the, the different scenarios, I'm struck by how, you know, if you look at city total vehicle miles traveled and you look at Scenario Two slowing growth, and you look at Scenario Four, the sustainability tested, that's an increase of 62.5% in housing, and it's an increase of less than 1% in city total vehicle miles traveled. So, you know, the decisions that we're going to be making are compromises. And we have to decide, you know, what impacts we're willing to handle in exchange for what benefits we get out of it. And I think that when we have this conversation later on, it'll be really important, not just to compare, this is worse than that, but, but what do you gain in, in exchange? And so that was very striking to me.
Okay. Final speaker on this, Councilmember Schmidt.
Yeah, I'm, I have a general concern about the motion, is it is very general in nature. And, you know, I was, come back with a variety of perspectives, statements, and so on. What's missing is the specifics. So let me try an amendment. We've talked a lot about the jobs-housing imbalance and what happens to housing. So let me propose an amendment that we return to the jobs-housing balance we had in 1990, which is 2.5, two jobs for every employed resident.
2.47.
2.47.
I'll second it.
Okay, let me make the case. If you look at the history of Palo Alto going through comprehensive plan discussions, in 1988, we had the Citywide Land Use and Transportation Study. It came after a two-year moratorium, and it was to deal with the traffic and parking issue. This had on page one, a solution, transportation demand management. Says this is a way, along with some rezoning, of getting us out of the traffic and parking issue we had. It did not have a very concrete output, although it said something about doubling the number of workers who were using transportation demand management. It didn't work. 10 years later, while they're following the comp plan that we're currently in, they came up with a notion of a University Avenue Parking Assessment District. Let's build some garages. And the business community got around that and said, okay, we'll build garages, form this assessment district, build garages. They added 700 spaces. But in a funny clause in there, they got parking rights to 9,100 spaces, which they are still using. So plans that don't have concrete measurable goals have problems. And over the last decades in Palo Alto, we're in the same situation they were in the late '80s and the late '90s. Gee, we have this traffic density, parking issue. We'd need concrete measures of solutions. So proposal is, let's have at least one concrete measure of a jobs-employed-resident ratio, which is reduced to our current level.
Councilmember DuBois? You seconded that, right? Wolbach, Councilmember Wolbach.
So, you know, this gets back to, you kind of what I was trying to suggest. So thank you for making it more articulately than I did. I'd actually suggest a slight tweak, which would be to study a return or to, using the language used earlier in the, in the motion, to evaluate return to the jobs-housing balance of 2.5 jobs. Would you be okay with that, a minor change? Okay. I've spoken enough to why this is important.
So I'm going to actually speak at this time because I want to make sure that we're really understanding the ramifications of this, and it may simplify the vote on it. We, just very. We, just very back of the napkin, to reduce, if we froze our jobs and had zero job growth over this period, not modest, but zero, to obtain this, we would have to, um, add housing units that would be equivalent to, what, about twenty percent of our existing jobs? So, that's, you know, say in the ballpark of, um, enough housing units to employ, uh, I'm not sure how the math is going to go. Eric, have you done the math?
Ten thousand.
Oh, I, I thought it would, no, that's, that's not right.
It's a third.
Oh, wait, use your mic.
We've got twenty-eight thousand housing units now, and it looks to me like we'd have to add about ten thousand, so that would be another fifty percent of the housing stock.
Uh, I, I suspect that's actually low when you look at jobs per household, but even if we use that number, we're talking about adding.
It's, it's big.
Ten thousand housing units in this period, and freezing job growth. So, for me, it's nice to throw out some number, uh, but I don't think my colleagues have actually thought through the ramifications of this amendment.
But I did.
Uh, or the, the maker and the seconder, I'm saying.
I think Cory thought it.
Okay. So, um, if we, if we have enough, if councilmembers feel they, they understand the ramifications of this well enough to vote on it, we can go forward. If people want to speak to it, we can speak more. Okay. Councilmember DeBois.
I, I just had a quick question. Was the intent, um, the overall balance, we go to two point five, or just that the growth, the new jobs, we go to two point five?
Uh, the intention, intention was to take the new job growth over the fifteen, sixteen year period.
No, that's not what this says, at all.
I think that the goal is to see what kinds of changes over the next fifteen years would result in a balance similar to what we had in nineteen ninety.
That's what the motion says.
Fully understanding that this is study, not promotion, so that we would understand just what those implications would be.
Yeah. It's, it's actually evaluate, which I'd say is less strong than study, but.
Okay. Um, Councilmember DeBois, did you want to speak briefly to this? Vote on the amendment. That fails on a vote of, um, with councilmembers Wolbach and Schmidt voting yes. Uh, all right. Are we ready to return to the main motion?
Uh-huh.
Okay, please vote on the board. And that passes eight to one with Councilmember Schmidt voting no. All right, now we return to the process part, uh, which is a question of, uh, how we align upcoming comp plan and citizen advisory committee meetings, um, and both the schedule and the topics, and not only how we, uh, look at what the council's doing, uh, on those topics, but also what the council's taking up on related matters, and how it relates to what the C A C is doing. So, Councilmember DeBois.
Yeah, I just had some quick comments. I think, um, you know, the question about the schedule, I think we reviewed the community services element, and some of the feedback was, you know, kind of wanted to see another draft before the whole thing was done, and, and again, that was an easier element, so I kind of want to see the schedule give some time to, to have a, have a review of, uh, kind of final edits. Um, I'd like to see the assumptions on land use come to council before they go to the C A C, which is going to be tough unless we re-jugge the schedule here. The issue of the C A C and, uh, on the housing discussion, um, I think one thing we might want to consider is having councilmembers go to a C A C meeting, or trying to use time that way. I, I, I think we're, housing is going to be a big enough issue that if we do have a joint meeting, that we should still have a separate council meeting to really deliberate and discuss housing. And I see we have a sustainability session in August. I'm not sure, again, I think we've talked about sustainability, kind of cutting across elements, we're having a sus- separate S K discussion, so, uh, I don't know if we need a sustainability comp plan discussion, or we should use that for some of these other topics.
Well, I'll just say that one of the thoughts I had is, we, we were hearing that the C A C want to have, um, a discussion process with the council. We, we had our last meeting with the C A C, and it was great to really hear from each member. It, I think it, it gave us a sense of, of, uh, the range of viewpoints and, and, and the commonality of viewpoints amongst, uh, the members, uh, but it really didn't allow for a dialogue of nine councilmembers and twenty C A C members, and I'm not sure how that could occur. So, a thought, uh, that I had is that on given topics, if we have study sessions with the C A C, that the C A C, um, appoint representatives on each topic, and whether it's five C A C members who represent the C A C, so that we could actually have discussions with the C A C, uh, but, but let them decide who would rep, represent them on given topics. So, I don't know if that's something that, uh, seems like, uh, maybe, uh, worth trying, um, but I'd be interested in hearing that. And then, that's just a process one. Uh, the other thing that, that, um, I know that the C A C's been going through, struggling with, um, committees and subcommittees, uh, and I, I do want to make sure that it's clear to the C A C that, uh, as long as they are abiding by the Brown Act, that there is no constraint on them being able to have individuals or small groups meet on an ad hoc basis, uh, without requiring staff, or staff support, or notice meetings. I mean, they're, they're, the, the rules allow them to get together in small groups, and, and I, for some reason, C A C members are under a different impression as to what their, the limitations on how they can function, and I just want to make sure that that gets clarified for them. Jeremy?
I can speak to that last point. We, we have, Hillary and I both indicated to the C A C through the rules and also conversations with them, that, um, we said, obviously, you can meet. We tried to discourage ad hoc meetings to some extent, because we wanted to avoid some of the issues that we believed occurred, uh, during the P T C's, uh, iteration of the draft, where there were meetings going on, and the public wasn't involved and invited. Um, we, we've said, certainly, you could, if you're going to meet and not tell us, that's, we understand that, but we wanted to preserve an open, transparent process as much as possible, so, um, while we haven't been embracing it, um, we've indicated that we understood it may happen, so.
Yeah, I think your discouragement has been taken to mean that they can't get together as small groups to think about things, then instead, they're, they're limited to a fairly regimented process, and it really doesn't lend itself to, uh, the kind of problem-solving and deliberation and iterative process that, that occurs if you can allow small groups of people to, um, to think about things, and they come, and in an open way, a, a minority of, of a group can say, oh, uh, we have this proposal. I mean, when we have, when we have colleagues' memos, uh, if only one councilmember could come and make a proposal, uh, on, uh, kind of a legislative direction, without having conferred with any other councilmembers, and thought about it, and, and had that concept mature a bit before coming to the full body, uh, it really wouldn't be very productive. Now, when we bring a colleague's memo, it doesn't mean that it's fully baked. We, we typically are very often, as a council, will modify it, will critique it, we might reject it. So, I think this strong discouragement is stifling, and the process of having twenty people there, and you have a given subject, and you have a limited amount of time, so they, that, what I've heard from a number of C A C members is they really don't have a, uh, an adequate opportunity to have discourse and deliberation. And so, I, I think, one, I don't think it's appropriate to discourage them from having discussions that they have a full legal right to do as members, and that would not violate the Brown Act in any way, provided that they don't. And second, we need to have more opportunity for real discourse and deliberation as a C A C body. So, those are a couple of things that I would really want to encourage.
Mayor Burt, if I can just ask a quick question? You know, I, it had been this council's direction in the past, that when the, uh, C A C appoints a subcommittee, that that subcommittee should meet at a time and place where the public can observe, and you're not proposing to change that, just.
Nope.
If there's a subset of the subcommittee.
Just that individual members of the C A C can, are not strongly discouraged from getting together and talking, and that's, and that they should be then subsequently completely transparent with the C A C and whatever. If they, if out of their discussions, they, they think they've got an idea they want to bring forward, then they say, hey, we, several of us spoke about this, and here's an idea. Uh, Councilmember Wolbach.
I fully support the comments by Councilmember Burt, except that I still think that subcommittees should, if necessary, be able to meet independently, as I moved in without a second at a previous Given the direction that you have from the council, and the comment you've just heard from the mayor, which I've supported, but these are just individual comments at this point, do you need a motion in order to relay that message to, okay?
Councilmember Holman?
Yeah, I also, um, support the comments that were made, um, by the mayor. Also, one of the other comments that I hear, and I've heard quite a bit, is that, um, you know, if we're going to have representatives, which I think is maybe a workable way to do this, to have a joint meeting discussion with the C A C members and, and the council, having those representatives, uh, is a great idea. That said, one of the comments that I have heard several times is that the C A C doesn't take votes, and it seems to me it would be important for them to take votes, because it's a part of, it's the culmination of a discussion that they oftentimes talk about, they don't have time to, to have either. And I've heard it several times from a number of different people, how they don't, you know, they come in and everybody makes their own comments, but they don't have the discussion. So, there isn't like a, there isn't like a, a conclusion that's arrived at. So, there's no vote, so when somebody comes to the council to represent the C A C's positions, is that a minority view, or a majority view, and how would we know if it was both, or just one or the other, if there isn't a vote taken?
Can I follow up?
Yeah.
Um, and, uh, my experience in both, uh, a number of, kind of multi-stakeholder advisory groups, uh, and outside of city, um, processes, as well as what we had in the SOFA one and SOFA two, that Councilmember Holman and I participated in, was, um, a process of consensus building, and that the group worked toward a consensus, which is not unanimity. So, you'd have to define roughly what consensus means, um, but I think that we would not benefit from narrow, simple majority votes on, uh, a stakeholder group that, that has started, starts off with perhaps differing viewpoints, and what we really want is a group to work toward consensus. And then, um, once they have consensus, that's, that's the vote I would prefer to see. Uh, and that, that takes some deliberation. That doesn't just happen when people just say their opinions and you take a vote. I mean, maybe sometimes you'll have that out of the gate, but on most contentious topics, uh, it really takes some work, and that's what happens in multi-stakeholder groups that are facilitated and, and work toward that as a goal. Jeremy?
Thank you.
So, for, for me to follow up on that, just before, Jeremy? Um, so, yes, working towards consensus, but that doesn't mean that we won't still have a majority and a minority opinion, especially when it comes to housing. So, um, when there are representatives that come to this body and participate, I would want to make sure that both perspectives are represented here, but then again, Pat and I've both been talking about how we get to how those perspectives are identified.
Thank you to both. Um, at least it's my experience at the C A C meetings, that there's, um, an active proa- obviously proactive, um, engagement by the co-chairs to draw out, um, areas of contention and consensus, uh, to a point where if necessary, straw polls are taken to really define those. We've defined a minority, a minority opinion at four members, um, not, less than that, so we look, we look for about four members to get to that point. Um, and then those issues are then taken to the subcommittees where they have a further discussion, refinement. If they can't come to a consensus on a particular issue, that's where we develop a kind of a pro and con, um, or set of arguments that the, that the subcommittee members themselves put together. We haven't had the opportunity to have that discussion here at the, at the council yet, because we've only brought forward one, um, uh, one element that was not contentious. Uh, but that, my, my experience there is that, that's what's, that's what's occurring.
Well, and I think the process you described is good, where if you have subcommittees that represent the diversity of stakeholder viewpoints, and then they, as a group of five, or whatever, can hammer out a discussion and move toward, if they can have a consensus and even unanimity, they can probably sell it to the larger group. Um, so, yeah, I agree that that's an effective process. Okay, Councilmember Schmidt.
Yeah, I think one of the values of the C A C is to, uh, raise issues as you get involved in the details that might not otherwise appear, and I think it's important that the council gets some feedback on when there is a diversity of opinions, uh, rather than just the final results. So, I find it very valuable to hear, uh, the points where there, there's a lively discussion, and maybe various points of view, and if there's some way of feeding that to the council. Uh, I know you take minutes of the meeting, maybe if you just make those available to the council. If there are stroll polls, it's easy to identify, well, here's an issue where there's some division going on, but I think that's valuable for the council as we get into transportation and land use.
So, we've had some feedback on process. Um, one question is, do we need to formalize that, or is staff comfortable with this as a feedback?
Yeah, I think, uh, I think we can safely say that we're comfortable with this. I, I would just put one caveat on it, which is, um, I think that, um, the council is asking, um, that we deepen the process, um, somewhat, and, uh, that's going to, you know, the, the ability for people to have ad hoc conversations, ultimately, they are going to want to bring those back and integrate them in the group, and fortunately, we do have experienced co-chairs who can do that, but that also does put some demands on the staff to be able to support that, so that those processes work right. And of course, we're losing the lead staff person we have on this.
When you said bring it back, you mean not supporting the ad hoc, but just helping the integration? Is that what you mean?
Yeah, the integration within the C A C itself. People are going to come back, and there, there may be some well, well-developed arguments that, again, have to be handled artfully, so that the, the, the other folks, you know, have a chance. So, I'm just saying.
Okay.
We have some staff support in the near term that's going to pose some challenges.
So, then, we've, we've given some process input, we also need to see if there's any specific feedback on the schedule. Councilmember Holman?
Yes, um, I note that the transportation, uh, element is looked at by the C A C, um, already, uh, actually twice. It doesn't come to the council until April twenty-fifth, and, you know, I'm not assuming, but supposing that there might be some comments that the council might have. It doesn't show that it's going back to, um, the C A C. I note that land use and community design is very different, because it comes to the C A C April nineteen, then it comes to council June sixth, and then goes back to the C A C on June twenty-one. So, I'm wondering why the different processes, the different iterations, because there's not an opportunity for the council to give feedback.
I'll tell you what.
To the C A C on transportation, and also the very tight interconnectedness between transportation and land use. Is there any combined discussion of those two at the C A C? It's not indicating. It's not indicated here.
Oh, thank you for those questions, Councilmember Holman. Just a reminder, too, I think I mentioned in my presentation that April 25th date is not going to work for the transportation element discussion here at council, because the CAC's last discussion didn't get to resolution, and so they're going to need one more pass at transportation, which we hope we're going to combine into one of these other meetings after a heavy lifting by a subcommittee. We're quickly running up against a constraint here, as you pointed out. We don't have multiple iterations in the schedule of something coming to the council, then going back to the CAC, then coming back to the council. And if the council would like to add those multiple iterations, both on the CAC side and on the council side, that's a significant shift, and we'll have to evaluate the resources and how we would fit that into the schedule.
So that said, so if the CAC didn't conclude on transportation, is there enough direction or conclusion that's been arrived at that it would be meaningful for the transportation discussion that's happened so far, come to council before it goes back to the CAC for their final deliberation? I mean, you know what shape it's in, I don't.
Actually, the CAC as a whole delegated to the subcommittee to take it to the next step, to the next, you know, try and get, develop a polished document, and then it was the committee's expectation it would go back to the CAC for blessing before it came to the council as a draft. So that's the process they're anticipating. You know, of course, you could ask them to change that process, but this meeting happened a couple of weeks ago, and that's their expectation.
I was just curious about why it was very different with land use, so we'll see how that goes. I do have one question in particular about land use and community design element. I just want to make sure that, there was a colleagues' memo that was put forth, and I apologize, I don't remember who all, but I know Vice Mayor Scharf and I had put forward, and I think two other colleagues, had put forward a memo having to do with how buildings, basically how buildings address the street, incorporating our community design guidelines and stuff. And the staff for a long time didn't even know it existed, so not your fault. But I just want to make sure that that's going to be included in the land use and community design section, because it was deferred to the comprehensive plan discussion.
I do recollect that discussion, and we'll make sure it's reflected in the policies and programs in the land use element.
Okay, great. I think that's, I think that's it. Thank you.
And I want to recognize that we have the co-chairs of the CAC here, and if you have, hi. We welcome any brief comments, if you have any, on this process discussion or scheduled discussion. So if you want to think about that while I call on Councilmember DeBois, that'd be fine, but don't feel obliged, but I just, if you, we welcome them if you have them.
So I just wanted to react to this idea of going through two full cycles. I really appreciate the CAC's feedback, so this is not a slight at the CAC, I'm just concerned about time. But again, we saw the one version, the community services element, we had a lot of comments about its length, potential prioritization, and just kind of, I think Mayor Byrd had a lot of comments about kind of the wordiness and some things were. So again, I could envision a process where we see a draft, we give you comments, you polish it up, and it comes back to council, and so there might be another process there where it doesn't go to the CAC and then back to council. I'm a little bit worried about, you know, getting stuck in an editing loop with changes going in from both groups. But I think, again, that the overall impact is, I think, at least for myself, I'm more worried about the quality of the product and the timeline, and so if we need to extend the schedule, we should figure that out.
If I could speak to that, that would be a wonderful direction, because we are, as I think I've said in the past, still running, running under the assumption that we are sticking to the CAC concluding its work at the end of this year. So if that is no longer the goal of this body, then we'd like to know that now, instead of trying to, because right now, we're stuffing a lot of new meetings in a limited amount of time, so that would be helpful.
There's kind of two parts to it, and again, if you take, take my last comments about polishing edits, you could wrap up CAC at one point in time, and then we could still be looking at second drafts of things, even at further timeline even. So that's kind of two questions, and either way, I think, overall, for me, it's more about quality than meeting the date.
Thank you, that's, that's good for us to know. It'd be interesting to know if the rest of the council feels similarly. You know, as you look at this whole schedule, it really did, we did set this up so the CAC's work would be done in this calendar year, and then in the first part of next year, this council would review all the work products again. So that's when you would look at the re-revised and re-edited and simplified version, based on your prior direction.
Just last comment, I am concerned about that prioritization process. I think last time you said we'd get the entire comp plan and do the prioritization, and I think if we could split that up, that would be better.
And I see the co-chairs have approached the mic. I wasn't serious.
We took you as seriously. Thank you. So firstly, it's, Tom DeBois's, Councilmember DeBois's comments are very important, because if we want to keep to the schedule of finishing the bulk of our work by 2016, and considering the number of iterations we're going on seems to be more than we expected, then we would have to at least increase the number of meetings, and that's an issue with the current resources of staff and also with the expectations of the CAC. I'll just take the opportunity to make one other comment, which is that one of the pieces of feedback from the council at the meeting where we discussed, where we discussed the community services element, is that the nature of that element looked different from the nature of the 1998 to 2010 comp plan. In that comp plan, then there was, most of the narrative was sprinkled throughout, interspersed with the, with the policies and programs, and in fact, there was often a paragraph of narrative after each policy and program. It wasn't all collected at the beginning. And so when you looked at the element and saw it all collected at the beginning, you're wondering, why is there so much narrative? That's, you know, so, that's why. It's not more narrative than there was in the old comp plan, it just segregated differently. So I think that that's worth considering, instead of just taking, saying, taking a meat axe to the narrative in terms of restructuring it, refactoring it, and incorporating it throughout with the, with the policies and programs as the 1998 to 2010 comp plan was. Thank you.
And because we're co-chairs, I'm going to talk as well. First of all, general comment, really great discussion this evening. I can't tell you how helpful this is, and I really look forward to it coming back and the additional conversation that you're going to give, it's very, very helpful. One of the things that we are beginning to focus on, because we're finally at a point where we can do this, in particular with the transportation element, is when everybody got all their ideas out and staff diligently put all the items together, we ended up with twice as many policies as the previous comp plan, we ended up with a third more programs. And so part of the focus is now also to refine, consolidate, and make this a cleaner and more qualitative document that can be read. Critical to that effort is going to be staff's involvement and taking a strong hand in helping us craft a lot of this language. We are all amateurs, they're professionals, getting their ability and their art into it is going to be extremely helpful to us, and to that end, we need a Jeremy, too. So if you could provide some emphasis there, that would be very helpful to us.
What if we just had a policy to reduce programs and a program to reduce policies?
I would only triple that, so.
That's a good goal.
All right. I think that we're good enough without giving, taking motions on this. Everybody okay? All right, that concludes item number four. And then we have councilmember comments, and, yeah, report out.
Because I know you're all looking forward to this, and I've stayed till quarter 12 to tell you, the Bocchi Ball Tournament will be on Wednesday, April 20th. We need a team. We're not meeting that night, as far as I can tell, but we're not meeting that night. Actera moved their Friday night meeting, I mean, their Friday night event to Thursday night, so Wednesday night is wide open at this point, and I hope you'll all think about coming, but definitely, let's put a great team together. Remember, this is how the league makes money for their PAC in order to influence those kinds of things we'd like to see happen at Sacramento.
So I would like to report out on yesterday's Chinese New Year event at Mitchell, which was really fantastic. It was easily 500 people. And one of the things I, when I had some remarks, I spoke to the crowd about our former colleague Yahweh Ye, and when I sat next to Sheena Chin, who is on our library advisory commission, I asked, what portion of the, of the audience do you think is familiar with Yahweh? Because I wasn't seeing a lot of heads nodding. And she said, most of this community there are recently arrived immigrants and new members of our community. And it was, so that made that event doubly significant. One, it speaks to, you know, Yahweh was really focused on pulling in just this very large portion of our community that is recent immigrants, and that has accelerated in recent years. And so I was very thankful for that event, that they plan on having to be an annual event, but it, I think it emphasizes for us the need to have deliberate actions, that if we just have like traditional neighborhood events that new residents don't feel a part of, we're not going to pull them in. So we have to be creative and really reaching out deliberately and making people feel welcome, and I think there was, there was just a great enthusiasm about the fact that this was, they were participating in a Palo Alto event that at the same time was recognizing a real rich cultural traditions, and I think there's a real appreciation there and enthusiasm. So just to have us be thinking about that. Anyway, that's it. Meeting's adjourned. Thank you.